Good evening. I'd like to call this November 12th meeting of the Northfield Township Board to order. Let's stand for the invocation which Ms. Otto will give and then the pledge.
Dear God, I pray that you guide us always, satisfy the needs that need to be met here during this meeting. Please guide us so that this meeting can be productive. Let us be effective and decisive. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll call the roll since Clerk Manley's delayed. Ms. Chick?
Here.
Ms. Otto?
Present.
Ms. Chockley here. Ms. Elnock?
Present.
Mr. Dockett?
Present.
Ms. Bellinger?
Here.
Okay, six here and Ms. Manley is delayed.
I didn't hear you.
Ms. Manley is delayed. There's six of us here.
I mean, I heard you, but I didn't hear you. You said you were present.
I did, at the third time, third person, Mr. Dockett.
I'm sorry.
Okay, now we have an opportunity for calls to the public. Please feel free to come up to the microphone, turn on the microphone and take it out, hold it up to your mouth, so everybody can hear you. You have about three minutes, or less, and please don't make personal attacks on board members. Thank you. Oh, yeah. I know.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. Before I start this evening, I just wonder if any of you happened to watch Channel 4 News this evening, where they were talking about a young teenager, they said a local teenager, I assume it's in the Detroit area, who received a double lung transplant from vaping. People should take notice to that. Anyways, I'm gonna say what I have to say for the last time. I'm disappointed and angry that over 4,000 registered voters in our township couldn't be bothered to vote. Only 2,396 voted out of 6,740 total registered voters in our township. The outcome of this election could have been much different. To the pro-marijuana people, don't complain when your grandiose pot business ideas fail to fulfill your expectations. Also, the nasty hatred things that have surfaced on Facebook, as well as the graffiti on Barker Road Bridge, it all needs to stop. We're a much better community than that, and we need to prove that. Furthermore, something else to leave you with is this. The picture of Sam Maya Quinto and myself in the Ann Arbor News on Election Day should set up a positive tone for this community, but unfortunately, I don't believe it will happen. And last, I want to say this. A couple of years ago, I said I was not going to attend any more township board meetings because of something that had happened. And unfortunately, I'm at that point again. And the reason I say this is because this election, more than any other, has taken its toll on me in many ways, including medical. And that is why I will not be attending any more board meetings or anything else political. I will hear my voice heard at the polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, one up.
Barb Whitka, 5985 Leland Drive. I am, of course, very disappointed in the outcome of the election, but what became very clear to me during the time that I was going home to home and discussing the issue is that we are a very divided, even then, and unique community. Unfortunately, the same argument against marijuana didn't resonate the same with everyone. Some people really don't care what happens in Whitmore Lake, and it appears the majority of Whitmore Lake residents don't care what happens in the rest of Northfield Township, namely Precinct 2. It also became clear to me that although all of this was precipitated by the legalization of marijuana and the board's inability to come to a reasonable decision, it really is essentially a zoning issue. It really is an issue of how well Northfield Township would be able to handle the enormous transformation that all the marijuana businesses would bring. But what I would like to specifically point out is that Precinct 2 decidedly voted against marijuana businesses in Northfield Township, and it had the largest percentage of voter turnout of any precinct. The percentage of people who voted in 2018 for the legalization of marijuana was 63.7. The percentage of people for all of Northfield Township who want the businesses here is 55.5, not exactly resounding. If, as some of you have pointed out many times, you speak for the will of the voter, then you should use the same logic now. Do not put marijuana businesses in Precinct 2.
Thank you.
Sam Maya Quinto, 9876 Main Street. I am before you today to share disappointment in a Northfield Township Board member. I'm very disappointed that this Board of Trustees member speaks ill will of Northfield Township business owners at public meetings. I'm very disappointed that this Board of Trustees member has not recused themselves from conflict of interest votes, i.e., this board member solicited signatures for the referendum and then grandstands at the Northfield Township Board meetings about their stance on the issue. I am very disappointed that this Board of Trustees member speaks ill will of fellow board members. I am very disappointed that this board member has spoken ill of many people who have volunteered many hours in this community for years. I was taught that life lessons. If you don't have anything nice to say, then don't say anything at all. This board member obviously has not learned these life lessons. I am very disappointed that this board member has voted at Parks and Rec meetings in favor of items that we have discussed, then at the Board of Trustees meetings, votes against those set items. This is just a small example of how disappointing this Board of Trustees member is. This is a Board of Trustees member like this that turns people away from our community, and a Board of Trustees member who has people question themselves as to why they would help volunteer in Northfield Township. These disappointments were witnessed by myself, or shared firsthand by the people that this board member spoke to. This board member is Tom Bellinger. Tom Bellinger is a disappointment to the voters and citizens of Northfield Township. Thank you.
Let's try to keep this a more above-board, please. Thank you. Anyone else like to come up?
Dan McLean, 9650 Main Street. So, I'm gonna change the subject a little bit and go on to the blight scenario that we're trying to improve on in Whitmore Lake. I see a lot of public coming together. It was really great over the weekend when we saw the graffiti under the bridge and everybody came out and tried to clean there. Some folks went over and above to clean that up. But I'm still extremely disappointed at some of the properties that aren't being addressed. And I sent in several of the online ordinance, I guess, concerns. And one particularly is that building out there on Barker, when it first come off of 23, that dilapidated building. I took the opportunity and I called the real estate person that has that listing, and I asked them how he could, in good conscience, even represent that property. And he basically said it was economical, and I get that. But I said, "It sure would seem pretty apparent that if you were to tear that building down, you can increase the value and probably sell it for what it cost to tear that building down." So I don't know why the board, or the city, or whatever it is that does Township, that does this stuff, can't get more active in forcing the ordinances, particularly on the properties that just are so downright terrible looking. So, that's all.
Monica Miller, I'm at 679-198-MILE-RO. I am, of course, exceptionally disappointed in the vote regarding the marijuana dispensaries and the pot farms that may soon be descending upon Northfield Township. I'm concerned, first of all, will there be an actual limit on the number of dispensaries? There are only 8,000 people that live in this township, and I think that that is an issue that this board needs to address, the limit. I'm also concerned, who really is going to be establishing pot farms within the boundaries of the township? Are these people who are actually going to, they live here, they work here, they're invested in the township, they send their children to our schools, they attend our churches? Or are these corporations that are gonna be coming in here and gobbling up acreage and establishing these pot farms? I think that's an issue as well. And then again, will there be a cap? And where will these pot farms actually be established? I live in Precinct 2. Almost two to one in my precinct voted against having pot farms and dispensaries. And I think that there should be some sensitivity on the part of this board regarding those of us who live in that precinct. We turned out, and we, in the precinct where I live, we prevailed. And I think that that's something that needs to be considered by this, by this board. Also, the issue of buffer zones. Buffer zones around schools, parks, playgrounds, churches, nursing homes, community centers, also something that we need to be looking at as we, as unfortunately, we're going forward. Unless there's something that can be done, then those are, those are my concerns, and thank you.
Thank you. I'll have a copy of the article I'm gonna refer to and what I'm speaking about today. My name is Mary Chek. I live at 9615 Main Street. I own that property. I own MRCA Properties and 22 Barker and the Northfield Crossing Building. Good evening. First and foremost, thank you-
And the Nor-
Excuse me?
And the Northfield what?
The name of the building is now Northfield Crossing?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. First and foremost, thank you for your service to Northfield Township. I implore you to please include the downtown district as an acceptable space for marijuana provisioning centers. In the time I've owned this building, I have gone above and beyond to improve this building. I have installed new parking lots, new business sign, I lowered the rent for Family Video to 300 a month to keep a business in Northfield Township to support community commerce. I have secured an upstanding company that wishes to lease space at 22 Barker. I've provided you with an article. Please take some time at your leisure. G.S. Ashley is featured in this article. I understand there's concerns. We, as a community, need to understand that board decisions can financially destroy my business, as well as other small business owners. I am currently struggling to maintain this building and pay taxes. I have hired three different real estate agents at 22 Barker, and it has remained vacant for over a year. I am also a resident of Northfield Township. I care about this community, but without some growth and help from our Board of Trustees, I fear for our financial future, and I fear that it is bleak. The voters have spoken. Specifically, downtown area precincts 1 and 3 overwhelmingly supported a no on the marijuana business ban. Please honor the will of the people you swore to represent. Thank you. Thank you.
John Gura, 7659 Edmonds. Before I start, I'd like to thank Adam Chabon of Elite Handyman. If you're unaware, someone felt the need to vandalize the underpass at Barker Road, and Adam took it upon himself, at his own cost, to rectify the situation. Within 24 hours, he had completely painted over the entire area and made sure kids didn't get any new words to sound out on their way to school on Monday morning. Adam spent over $200 and hours of his own time to clean up after others. And if anyone's interested and donated money to make him whole, I will share his information with the board members, including receipts, in hopes that they can post it publicly. Thank you. Now, I would like to thank the 2,300-plus voters who showed up to participate and have their voices heard. An almost 40 percent voter turnout is higher than most elections, and particularly impressive in an off-year election with a single ballot issue. Great job to everyone for participating and being part of the community. Unfortunately, the reality is about to set in. From the Save Northfield website, they say, "Voting yes takes the power away from the board and gives it to the voters." Everyone in attendance tonight and viewing online will get to witness the half-truths and deceptive nature of this group, and at least one of the trustees and leaders of the Save Northfield organization, as they show you the other side of the vote they didn't want to talk about. What happens if you vote no? Well, that's tricky. You see, unlike a yes vote, a no vote doesn't give the power to the people. A no vote initiates competitive mental gymnastics. And instead of voting, instead of voters not knowing what they were voting for in the 2018 election, you'll get to see board members unable to comprehend what the voters could possibly want. What will we hear? Maybe they're okay with medical, but not recreational. Maybe small grows, but not large ones. I have no idea where the people could possibly be okay with illegal business making transactions. We could model this adult-only substance, the same as alcohol and cigarettes, but that seems far too logical. Just stop. Stop seeing this as a battle you lost, twice. You just don't happen to have the same mentality on the subject as the majority of the residents in Northfield. That doesn't make you or them bad people with ill intent. It just means there will probably be a business in town where you don't spend your money, and that's okay. Stop trying to further divide this town. The people have spoken. The ordinance has been bickered over for an entire year. The time has come. The only thing you have to do now is honor the vote. If a disagreement over legal substance is all it takes for you to turn your back on a vote that had language that all of you approved-
10 seconds.
-and some of you pushed for, then maybe you're sitting on the wrong side of the table. And just so everyone knows, the vote for yes in Precinct 2 was 480 people total.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dana Forrester, 9255 Liquid Drive. I'm also a downtown Main Street business owner. I got here a little late, so as far as I know, the marijuana ordinance vote in zoning review is still pushed to the end tonight, and to me, it's a slap in the face. It appears to be yet another stall tactic by certain board members. If the clock runs out tonight, will the ordinance even be voted on, or will we have to wait another two weeks? The board keeps kicking the can down the road, and we are tired of it. The Northfield Township voters have spoken twice, yet some board members choose to ignore and even block their wishes. You came, you claim to represent the people, but you don't. Your poor leadership is noted and will be called out during the 2020 elections. Your constituents are paying attention and will vote accordingly come reelection time. Regarding zoning, I echo Mary Chek, who spoke earlier. I am a downtown business owner, and polling my neighbors, 95% of us would like to see businesses downtown. Precincts 1 and 3, those closest to downtown, also overwhelmingly voted in favor of allowing cannabis. I agree with Mary. I've met the dispensary person that wants to, or owner that wants to open at the former Family Video. He is very reputable. He has a great track record in Ann Arbor, and he would give back to the community. So, again, I urge you guys to allow zoning in downtown. Overall, I urge you all to abide by the wishes of Northfield Township voters and move forward with passing sensible marijuana zoning ordinances. One last thing I want to address, I know Save Northfield was terrifying people with big corporate pot. Y'all wanted Myers. Myers is a corporation. Corporations aren't necessarily bad. You know, it's just, you know, so that whole corporate terrifying, terrify you with the corporation, that's just some BS. Anyway, thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
James Trunko, 9255 Liquid Drive. Also, along with my wife, a business owner downtown. I wanted to address something. I read a letter in the, in tonight's meeting packet that talks about that cannabis is illegal federally. Yes, it is, but it's legal in Michigan. Federal government gave states the right to mandate their own laws about it. As long as Michigan abides by the guidelines put in place by the federal government, the feds will not pursue federal charges against anybody in Michigan. It's legal in Michigan. And I was just, I was just appalled by the hypocrisy in that letter. The person said, you know, they advised that a certain board member recused themselves from, you know, all this cannabis, the cannabis vote, just because she had offered to meet to talk with anyone, yes or no, and if they had questions about it at the library, when three members of this board put their own personal agendas, as she put it, ahead of the will of the people. The people that have voted twice to approve cannabis in Michigan and Northfield Township. So again, the people have voted twice, as many others have said. It's here, and it's in Northfield Township, and we approved it. So I'm here to encourage the board to expediently pass the required ordinances concerning cannabis businesses as quickly as possible, so we can move forward. Thank you.
Hello, David Gordon, Halna Road. I live in District 2, and I voted in favor of having pot businesses here. Here's what I learned. Supervisor Chockley, Clerk Manley, and Trustee Bellinger learned something on November 5th, that they were wrong. You believed with all your heart that the residents here were okay with growing their own pot and smoking it, but they were against any commerce involving pot. Just because you believe something doesn't make it so. Here's the bigger point. This board is divided on more issues than any board I can recall in the 20 years I've been paying attention. Four to three voting is the norm, and unanimous votes are rare. Hell, you barely passed the master plan four to three. So, many of the decisions of this board are decided by a very slim margin, often just one vote. And we know that simply getting elected doesn't give you special insight into what the voters are thinking, or a special connection with the silent majority, if there is such a thing. The pot discussion electrified this community, and lots of people got involved, and now we have an outcome and are confident in the path we need to take. I'm not saying every issue should go to the ballot, but there are two really big projects this board is pushing right now, and I want to say that, say something to you. Maybe you're wrong about this, too. Maybe the residents don't want to trade away 80% of their park plan for more houses on the lake. Maybe they'd rather pay a small village to have a beautiful big park unspoiled by houses. Maybe they just want a park like they said overwhelmingly, twice. This is your park plan. This is the North Village Master Plan, and this is the section called Outreach, where you reached out to the community and you had two surveys. Both of them said, 61 and 63% of the community said they want a park only. That's a two to one margin over the people that wanted to have mixed use there. Maybe the sewer customers don't want to get stuck with an $8 million expansion that will do nothing for them. It's your duty to find out, because maybe you're wrong about what you think they really want. Do the hard work of drafting the surveys on these two huge issues. Transparency isn't enough. A concerted outreach is the least you can do before drowning us in debt or trashing the park. I volunteer to help with any committee that's formed to accomplish this important task. Thank you for your time, and by the way, when you're going to have that meeting where you do have a give and take, you know, where there's a dialogue between the public and the board, that would be really nice, because this is a stilted non-conversation here. Thank you. And to learn more, go to northfieldneighbors.com today. Thank you.
I'm Wayne Davidson. I live at 8015 Coil Road. It's literally been four and a half years since I walked in.
Sir, your mic may not be on. Sir, your microphone may not be on. You should take it out, too. Take it out.
It's been four and a half years.
Turn it on. You'll have to turn it on.
Hello. It's been about four and a half years in the making since I first walked into this township.
You've got to hold it right to your mouth, sir.
I said it's been four and a half years since I first walked into this township and initially spoke up and talked to somebody about this.
Keep it right at your mouth, sir.
I'm just ecstatic that the votes went the way they did. I'm just happy about all that. So, have a good night, everybody. That's great.
Take out the-
I'll be fine like this.
Okay, speak loudly.
I want to hold on to the lectern. I live at 450 West Joy Road. Point of order before we start my timer, perhaps, Madam Supervisor?
Go ahead.
There was a period when the opposition, as I would allow call them, would send people up here and they would trade minutes back and forth, so that one non-citizen could lecture us for six or nine minutes at a time, and that was all well and good. The last time I spoke, I asked for that privilege and I was denied. And having checked, there was never any action on the part of the board to define that or approve that, so it would seem that it's the whim of the supervisor. Could I have an extra moment if I needed?
Nope. Not today. Thank you.
Now we got that out of the way. Turn the timer on. Is it on?
It's on.
I've already been burning it up, okay. So, if we take a look at the bigger picture that's going on here, in the months before the August 12th special meeting, there was obviously a great deal of special interest work taking place, as this board micromanaged the elegant, really quite astounding work on the planning commission. You worked at reducing the number of permits, stretching out the distances between. You basically degraded a bunch of work by people who aren't into it. There are more than a couple people on the planning commission who would sooner not see pot in this township, and they handled it very professionally and kept their own interests at bay. I wrote a letter on 816 titled, "Madam Supervisor, A Matter of Great Importance." It's in tonight's packet. It made it in three months flat. I wrote it in August, then it made it into the packet in November. I was lobbying at several occasions on several meetings for it to become an actual action item, but that hasn't happened. You chose to respond to my letter twice, Madam Supervisor, once in an email and once in tonight's packet. And there is a paper in there entitled, "Mr. Warburton's Letter of 81619," where you accuse me of libel. It's really kind of a personal attack. I never received the copy until I opened the packet, but it's there for all to view and all to judge. It's a little hard when there's a general lack of transparency to do anything other than submise about what people did. I labeled three of you co-leaders of a special interest group. That may have been inaccurate. The rest of my letter was dead-on. I'm back, and I'm gonna keep coming back. Your letter in response to me points out that you have the right as a private citizen to circulate petitions and belong to a group, and that's true, but it doesn't give you the right to then sit at this board and judge it and vote for it. You also say that it's the legal obligation of the township to provide the ballot language, and that's not true.
Time's up, mister.
Can I have three more minutes, please?
No, you may not.
You've done it for them, time and time again.
I'll give you 20 more seconds. Go ahead.
All right. Your memo does not address the fact that three members of this board, trustee, a clerk, and a supervisor, played, played notably in a group that, when business came before this board, did not identify their conflict or recuse themselves in any way, shape, or form. Your diatribe about the evils of marijuana and youth only point out bad parenting.
Thank you, Mr. Warburton. Time's up. You can speak again at the end. You'll have another three minutes at the end. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Denise Polachella. I'm not a resident. I'm an attorney practicing in Brighton. I'm the founder and managing partner of Cannabis Attorneys in Michigan, and I've spent, except for five years, the last 35 years- except for five years, the last 35 years of my life between Washtenaw and Livingston Counties. I reviewed the ordinance and I apologize that I haven't been here at previous meetings or to engage on the ordinance specifically, but I wanted to point out two things as long as you're considering zoning tonight. First of all, I would strongly recommend taking the regulatory language as to caregivers and patients out of the ordinance. None of it's enforceable under the Medical Marijuana Act and it's a lot of sort of unnecessaryness. They're definitely not home-based businesses. As to the zoning of the licensed medical marijuana facilities in the state, it's really decent ordinance. I would strongly encourage you to remove the thousand-foot boundary between the facilities. As far as I read in the ordinance, there's no timeframe or other procedure in the ordinance for taking the applications, which is going to make it first come, first served. And with a thousand-foot boundaries, that's just litigation waiting to happen between people who have filed first or been accepted first or gotten into planning first. I've seen it happen in several other cities and it's just going to be litigation to the township and to the facilities. So you may want to consider just removing those boundaries. The buffer to residential or the buffer to churches or the buffer to whatever else you're going to do is obviously acceptable and well within your rights as a township, but the boundaries between the facilities is simply going to create competition that you don't want and long lines, weeks in advance of the applications being accepted and probably litigation. So, in any event, good luck. This is spirited and I'm enjoying it.
Thank you. Can you spell your last name, ma'am?
It's P-O-L-L-I-C-E-L-L-A.
Thank you.
Adam Olney, Wetmore Lake resident. Here we are again, a week after election, a year later. Last year, the following Tuesday after the election, you already had a prohibition ban in your hand to vote on with no vote from the board to create that. Someone asked the attorney to do it and he did it. The attorney acts on behalf of the board. So here we are a year later. We voted again. Some people won, some people lost. Depends on what side you see yourself on. So, up until this point, you've had the ordinance in front of you many, many times. You've made the changes. Tonight, stalling with concerns on where it's going to be and just delaying it and pushing it back is just a stall tactic. If there's changes or concerns you had, they should have already been brought up. You've had it in front of you many times. You put it on the agenda tonight because Mr. Dockett's going to be out of town and you wanted to ensure that the board members would be here to make the decision. When you guys set the sunset clause, some of you tried to set it to like January, that got voted down. Some of you even wanted to set it to later in November, that got voted down. It got supported to be put on the agenda tonight for a reason. When the yes side needed a special meeting to get their language passed, it was a special meeting the day before a meeting. And now, it's the last agenda item on a lengthy agenda. I don't know if the hope is that you don't get to it and then the sunset clause expires or you just table it. I don't know. But when the other side needed a special meeting, an entire meeting was called to ensure that things were taken care of. But tonight, who knows? I mean, more than likely, Mr. Dockett's going to leave. He's not going to stay here till midnight. Another thing on the agenda, sale of 75 Barker, another thing that's been on the agenda for multiple years. You had an offer earlier and it was contingent upon marijuana businesses. You didn't know the outcome of the vote at that time, so you didn't accept it. Understandable. Now you have an offer, full asking price. That's the reason you give a list of price because that's what you want. Someone offered you that. They've said they have plans that they would like to put a marijuana business in it and if that's not able to happen because of zoning purposes, then they have other options. Let the planning commission deal with it. Sell the property. You put it up for sale. Quit going back and forth on it. Sell the property, let the planning commission deal with it and if they're able to have a business that is related to marijuana, good for them. Someone in this town's going to. If not, which, just looking at it, doesn't look like they would because of school buffers, we'll see. And then these letters from the public, I don't see how you determine who gets in the packet and who doesn't. Amy Shoal, the daughter of Barb Griffin, another person who is a yes vote and a DDA member and her daughter gets a note in the packet immediately and Mr. Warburton has to wait over two months.
Thank you, Mr. Olney.
Favoritism.
Turn it back on and take it out.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Todd Hoffmeyer, 314 Lamar. I just want to say that the board today should approve the ordinance as written by the planning commission. Done.
Anyone else?
Coyote Winsong, 320 Delaware. I'd like to say in the last few months, I've been walking around downtown quite a bit and I did notice that probably the majority of the businesses had a vote no sign in front of their businesses. It's clear that downtown wants to have marijuana businesses in the downtown area. I'd also like to point out the blight issue that somebody else brought up. That house that's on Barker, other empty businesses on Main Street that have siding falling off, that look like they have holes in the roofs. These buildings aren't inhabitable. If we, I'd like to know who owns them and why that is allowed in our downtown. But we don't, you know, we don't want to have businesses that are going to bring in money and foot traffic. We'd rather have dilapidated holes in the roofs, siding falling off, empty buildings in our town. So, I'm very happy about the outcome of the vote and I would like to see this board move forward and get these businesses going. Thank you. And Domino's is a big corporation.
My name is Jerry Griffin. I'm here on behalf of Pinkana, Michigan-based, wholly Michigan-owned marijuana company located in Farmington Hills. A couple of comments about your ordinance. I understand the need for buffers between facilities. It's a common thread in most communities. We are currently active in about 11 communities right now. So it's not unusual. However, it is a bit unusual to add libraries and those types of things. I don't really understand what the protection that you're seeking from those types of facilities. Another one is that we've seen discussed and is now being dismissed pretty regularly is daycare centers. Nobody wants to locate one of these next to a daycare center anyway, but these are small children who are driven to these facilities, picked up and taken home. They are driven by every type of business in the community anyway. I don't think they're being exposed to anything in particular by there. And lastly, as far as the buffers between facilities, I think at the end of the day what you do with that is you pick winners and losers, not between us who might want to apply here, but between your business owners in town. You might have somebody right across the street from somebody else, both of them with vacant structures who would like to be able to rent those out. One of them can rent it to the cannabis industry where you can get a pretty significant premium on your rents or purchasing and the one right next door is not going to get that. So, you've got business owners in town who are going to be harmed by this. And lastly, I'd say this, I understand the reticence of everybody who's concerned about this because it's the fear of the unknown. We don't know what these businesses are going to look like. We think they're going to smell, who are they going to attract? Let me tell you something. The people who are getting involved in this industry are having to invest their own money in this and they're getting licensed. They're getting regulated heavily. Their products are getting tested. All the product that you have in this town right now, and it's here, I mean, I don't know it for sure, but it's here, is unlicensed, untested, and it's available to who's ever got cash in their pocket. Whereas opposed to the businesses that we're going to run, we are heavily regulated by the state. We've invested our own money. And if we're going to get a license from the state, we're sure as heck not going to do anything to put that license at risk and lose all that money. We are responsible business. My entity, Pinkana, we have a, we are involved in the grant with the University of Michigan Health System that is funded by the National Institute of Health. We're studying 1,000 patients right now. We are dedicated to this because my principals, who are all pretty much the same age as the board here, have had ailments that they have found that medical marijuana has treated and made a change in their life.
10 seconds.
So I would urge you to move on this. Consider some of the buffer questions that I've raised. Don't pick winners and losers amongst your business owners and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Shannon. I live right on Main Street, right in downtown, and I know that we're in a hurry, so I'll try and keep this fast. I'm very grateful that the attorney who spoke did because my, one of my concerns after the vote, I know that no one on the board can possibly be experienced with this. This is new for the whole state. But I know that the law is somewhat complex and we're all figuring this out as we go and I can, when I went to one of the meetings they had at the Old Family Video, there was a man from Warren there who spoke and he talked about being involved with a lawsuit. He explained a little bit what the lawsuit was about and I looked up some more and addition, there were other lawsuits as well as the one that he was involved with. And as you can hear from tonight, there are people on both sides who are angry. The ones who won are angry, the ones who lost are angry and I am concerned that we need to have this as airtight as possible. We don't want to be having lawsuits because that's just going to make everybody angry again. And if it means that you have to send it further down, personally, I would rather see you wait on that and make sure, talk with other attorneys. I wish that you were only going into this one step at a time rather than opening this bigot for all these different kinds of businesses to come in all at once. So, yeah, I really want to avoid lawsuits. The other thing is that, and I don't know if there's anything that you as the board can do about it, but I think it's Washtenaw County requires that you post where your money comes from in a campaign. And so, I know that the no side, they managed to have a billboard and if somebody here might actually know the cost, what I heard was $14,000 a month. So, that might not, does anybody know? Does anybody know? What is it? How much is it? Okay. That's... Okay. Anyhow, so it's expensive. It's not pocket change, right? But we don't know. We don't know who, because it wasn't, it wasn't, no, we didn't. My point is that they have not been posted. Where the money has come from has not been posted. So, I know people have concerns also about compliance, like if the town sets a rule that the people comply and so we're already starting out with non-compliance. And I just, the way something starts is the way it tends to go. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, Marissa Prisgent, 32 Schrum Drive. I wasn't going to speak because I wanted to see how it all played out here. I am a member of Northfield Township Green Goth, which was a citizens collaborative put together mostly by people in this room who are some of the most involved and evolved people I've met. I'm really proud to have gotten to know them. Additionally, throughout this process, I've gotten to meet some really awesome people from the other side too. When I say the other side, obviously I'm talking about this issue which has become so divisive in this community. But actually, standing outside of Precinct 2 campaigning for the vote no, I was able to spend quite a bit of time talking to Barb Wooka and we actually enjoyed each other's company quite a bit and it just reminded me that although this issue has been very passionate, we're also people and have much more in common than we do different. And I think that that's important to remember. However, coming up and making baseless accusations about campaign finances is really uncool. We dotted all of our i's and crossed all of our t's and any of that information would gladly be released and has been filed in accordance with state law. So thank you for your concern there, but we took care of that. That's pretty much all I have to say for now. I encourage you to pass the ordinance as written by the planning commission originally, allowing businesses downtown and also micro businesses in the Ag District. I'm still hoping you will change your mind on that. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Listen.
I don't know.
Was it on?
It was on.
Okay. Margaret Ridell, 65141, West Eight Mile, South Lyon. I am in Precinct 2. I voted against pot for a lot of different reasons. I think it would be very good if, if and when they go ahead and start putting all these pot places in place, that they leave Precinct 2 alone. We don't want it. Most of the people out there that voted, voted against any of it. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned here tonight is these event areas where people come, I guess, and have hash patches à la places. I really don't want them out there where I live, thanks. And we voted against it. We pay a lot of taxes. We get nothing for our taxes, as I've said before. It would be nice if the board would listen to the part of the voters that didn't want it. Another thing, people are going about this buffer thing. I cannot see the point of having pot places within certain distances of schools. They ought to be at least 1,000 feet away. I don't know why they changed that. They made it to where pot places have to be 1,000 feet apart, but they can be 500 feet from a school. Does it make sense to me? Also, I really and truly believe that all of the pot that's being talked about and all of the businesses and stuff, I hardly believe that the people in Wetmore Lake are going to have the money and the wherewithal to put out these. I think maybe a gentleman like this, who is big business pot, will be the ones that will be directing it. And if I've got any thoughts about this, I think that we will be looking at a different board come 2020 and I'm afraid, very much afraid, that it will be run by big business pot people.
Thank you.
Brad Kuzno, 2860 Tepiak Hill. I'm a Northfield Township Planning Commissioner and wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but this has been a very divisive issue and I do feel like when the planning commission was given the duty to generate the ordinance as before you, you were given zero direction by this board. It was, here's the law, come up with something. What we came up with, I felt like was unacceptable and I believe that your discussions after that were heading in a reasonable direction if we're going to have it at all. So, I would encourage you to continue that discussion on where and how many of these establishments are put in place. I would also encourage you to just, you know, I guess, just, you know, I think that in general, our community is not better for this vote that just happened and our state is not better for the vote in the first place. But that being just put aside, I think that we need to continue being reasonable. Don't go overboard. 52 or 56 permits is ridiculous. This is a small township, 8,400 people. That's absurd. We don't need that many in this township. And the way you were talking about before, your limitations on where and when they're placed, I think that was heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great. Seeing no one, we will move on to Board Member Response to Call to the Public. So, does anybody have any comments down here? No? Oh, okay. Ms. Elnakessa. Are you ready?
I can be ready.
Okay.
So I have a lot of comments because the public had a...
spirit of democracy and providing all of us the opportunity to go out and vote. There's nothing to me greater than the people's vote, and I would like to congratulate the no campaign. The people have spoken. Fifty-six percent have approved facilities. Forty-four percent did not. To me, as an elected board, it's now time to move forward with representing the concerns of the forty-four percent and ensuring businesses are properly implemented. So I would think that we need to move forward. I am pretty, I am happy with the ordinance, except there has been one omission that we need to address tonight, and my concern about it not being in the downtown, because it was in the downtown, then the ordinance we got wasn't in the downtown, so I believe the board, I know the board will address that tonight, as well as I think we need to address the four new businesses until we can have time to put an ordinance in place and address that. I do have comments as far as, I want to thank the people that worked on cleaning up the graffiti. That really does show township spirit, and thank you for spearheading that up. I also am very concerned that, as a board, we do not move on the blight issues that continue to happen. I mean, we do have our ordinance officer who goes out, and most people comply. I'd say, in general, most people comply on everything. I think you have the five percent that don't, and we, as a board, need to address that five percent and take action. I do think that we have an ordinance that is close to being adopting, except for, and it does consider, I think, moving inappropriate action. Let's see here, micro businesses, I'm just going through. I do think, and I have said this time and time again, we need procedures. We need procedures about how letters get into the package, how many minutes the public can speak, can they transfer their minutes, because it does create issues as well. So we need to address that. As far as the sale of Seventy-five Barker, to me, once the vote happens, I'm not sure if it's price tight enough, because I think it's going to be in high demand potentially. I think we, I think it'll be in high demand. I do think that we, and I'll address this later, is we do need to have an application process. I'm a little taken back that the planner and the township manager didn't have something to us today to look at. That's three weeks from our last meeting, even though I know we didn't give a deadline. But something of this importance, it needs to be worked on. It needs to be worked on now. I think that might, oh, the agenda. Time and time again, I have said that more deliberation needs to be put into the agenda of what the public is going to come out for. We have been talking about the ordinance for over pretty much a year, and again, I was flabbergasted, disappointed, bewildered that it was the last item on the agenda. I don't see how this keeps happening. A different policy, a different procedure, something needs to happen, because it happens time and time again. And I want the procedure explained, that how something as big as a people voting in our township can be the last item on the agenda. That makes no sense to me, and I don't know, I don't put the agenda together. Maybe I should, because I would do it differently.
Do you have anyone else?
That wraps up my comments.
Anyone else? Mr. Docket. Let's keep it, keep comments of the board in relation to the call to the public.
I will make any comment I like. This is call. This is, you know, I don't want to be restricted. So I'd like to say that I'm going to get off point. I think that marijuana is very important, but I think it's a dog. So I can be a chance to tackle a couple of the things. If we, we, last, at the last meeting, we made the park. Well, it's not a park. It's, now it's called North Village. It started out as a park, years and years, park, park, but now all of a sudden, and now it's North Village. So last, at the last meeting, we said we would take five acres for a park. So that leaves the rest of the twenty-three acres, I want to see them back on the tax roll. I mean tomorrow. I think it should be back on the tax roll. We used to collect eighteen thousand dollars, no, twenty-three thousand dollars on that property. So if this township is going, is only going to have a five-acre park, and this, the rest of this, we're going to sell to some company for a million bucks. I think it's worth a million dollars, and let's put it on the tax roll, and let's get the money coming in. Other thing, David Gordon is absolutely right. We're going to have some elections coming up, and nobody knows how important, in my opinion, that it is that we put on the ballot about the sewer expansion. We have voted to waste two-hundred thousand, but we haven't voted on the seven, eight, or nine million. So I think that should be on the ballot, and those are the two things I'm going to be working on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Otto.
Okay. I wanted to thank all the voters that came out to the bail, to the polls, both yes and no. You did make your voices heard, and that's what this, our democracy is all about, is to, is to get our voices heard. I wanted to thank those, especially Adam Shaban, who cleaned up the graffiti on the bridge. This is very much of our pride and our, in our community, that, you know, we've been, probably for the past month or so, we've been so divided, and this is one thing that brings us together, is that we can see that, we can work together to, to keep our community clean, keep our community strong, and I wish we continued to do that. Another, another item that I wanted to see is, I was also surprised to see that the marijuana ordinance was the last item on the agenda. Every, every Wednesday, Thursday before the board meetings, we get a copy of the draft agenda. This time, we did not get a copy of it. And I did ask for it. We did not get it.
Did you get it?
I did not see it.
I thought we did. But we're always told...
We got minutes, but we didn't get the draft agenda.
Okay. So if I may interrupt Ms. Otto, I've always been told that the order could change, too, though. So don't, don't just take that as what's going to happen.
But to me, if that was the last item on the agenda, we should have made a comment to make it the first item.
You can do that right now.
Yep, we can. Another thing that I wanted to say is Proposal One was an all-or-nothing initiative. It wasn't section of the township. It wasn't zoning of the township. It was an all-or-nothing proposal. So it was not segmented out. I do know that a lot of people, when I was out at the polls, a lot of people came up to me and told me that they thought that they could section it out by their yes/no vote, and I said, no, it can't. So whatever they were told, it wasn't correct. So by segmenting out zoning areas, this is the area that, this is the time to tell us about the zoning areas, but Proposal One was not it. So I just wanted to make that clear. And as far as moving the agenda item up, I would like to make a proposal, a motion.
Can we get everybody else to make comments first? Ms. Otto?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Ms. Chick?
Okay. I also wanted to thank Adam Shaban for taking care of the graffiti on the underpass. He also had help from Mr. Gura, John Gura, and from Connie Marie, I don't know her last name, but really appreciate, it took them twelve hours to get this all together, and Mr. Shaban paid for this out of his own pocket. And I asked him if I could donate. He goes, no, no, I do it from my heart, but if anybody wants to donate, please make an effort to do that. So thank you for doing that, and hopefully that those little vandals won't do that again. In regard to the proposal, the township has voted twice on this, and both times, they voted in favor, not only of recreational marijuana, but in favor of the ordinance and the businesses in the area that we've been discussing for the last seven months. So it wasn't just a vote for businesses, it was a vote for the businesses, the way we've been addressing them again. So I think if this board tries to stall or push it off or create other kind of obstacles that this can't be carried forward tonight, that you are doing a disservice to the voters that actually did vote in favor, and you have to honor the majority. And in regard to zoning out Precinct Two, Precinct Two is not a zoning designation, it is a precinct. It probably has several zoning designations within that precinct, and it's just not possible. So that's all I have.
Ms. Manley, please don't continue to interrupt us. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Manley.
Yeah, I just, again, want to thank everybody that voted November 5th, and to the office staff and the poll workers. It was a long day. The polls were short-staffed, the office, you know, fielded very many phone calls that day, some of them very odd, but they handled it very great. I want to address the issue of impropriety and ethics that keeps coming up, and we've gone over this before, but just so everybody knows once again, since there is a large audience here, this is my explanation of the process. The petitions were signed. Yes, I did gather five signatures, myself and my neighbors, to support the marijuana ban. I didn't lie. I didn't cover that up. I could have easily had my husband sign that he was a petitioner, my neighbor signs a petitioner, but I didn't. I chose it. I owned it. Would that have been a better option? Maybe, but it wouldn't have been very honest. Once the petitions were received in the clerk's office, they were received by the deputy clerk, the signatures were signed, they were verified as they were valid by the deputy clerk and the election specialists. Once I was notified of that, I called the county, said, what do we do at this point? He said, call the attorney, which I did. I spoke with Mr. Burns. Mr. Burns and myself and the county got together and we talked, because this hasn't been done before. Nobody really knew what to do with the petitions, how to get it on the ballot, because nobody has done it. From that point, it was pretty much between, you know, Mr. Burns took the lead, protected the township, did what he was supposed to do. It was, yes, all done in a very short timeframe.
No, no.
Okay. I'm speaking right now, Mr. Docket. So whatever spin you want to put on that and how it was handled, that's fine, but myself and the clerk's office would have handled it, no matter who brought these petitions in. No one out there, besides Mr. Warburton, who I spoke to, and I guess he doesn't believe me either, has called to speak with me and find out the truth and to see what the process was. I've said the same thing at every meeting. Call me, email me. If you want to talk, you want to find out what happened, I'm an open book. I have nothing to hide. People were also questioning the integrity of the last election, but yet no one applied to be an election worker. We were short workers. If you want to know what the process is, the best way to learn the process, come work. We have probably four elections next year. We're going to need workers. Give us a call. We'd love to have you. And then when we took the office, our First Amendment rights were not taken away. This has been told to us by the public, I'm sorry, by our attorney. We've spoken with the county, the Michigan Municipal League, the Deputy Secretary of State, our State Rep's office. I don't know who else you need to validate that this was not an ethical issue. And again, call me, email me, I'm here, I'm willing to talk. And I do agree with Mr. Gordon, we do need to get some kind of survey out on the sewers, on probably many issues that I'd love to discuss. We do need an application process on the marijuana, along with many other processes. We might want to get a process to where, if we get petitions again, what do we do with them at that point? I'd love to, you know, get a process on that, what the board feels that I should do next time. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bellager.
Good evening. The blight issue, thank you for bringing that up. Downtown has been struggling with blight since I've moved here about four and a half years ago. Those buildings are definitely in rough shape, including the house that was mentioned when you come off of Twenty-three Northbound there at Barker. The graffiti was very troubling underneath the overpass, particularly since we got the grant for the Kaboom Grant, and we had considered, and I don't know if we still will be, but we're considering a artful, like kid-type of a kid-friendly scape-type thing, some kind of a graphic design there. We were talking to an artist just a couple of months ago. So when that graffiti appeared, it was kind of like, oh, jeez, I don't know, can we put a mural there or not, and have it be protected? That was very concerning, but I'm very pleased to hear that people cleaned that up. Thank you. Regarding the sewer, you know, it seems like a pretty simple answer. If it's infrastructure we need, if we need to update our infrastructure, we need it. If we don't need to update our infrastructure, then, then we don't need it. But we're, it's not so much subject to public opinion as it is to an actual infrastructure need. So that should be the attitude with regards, in my opinion, to handling the sewer. Now I'd like to clarify once again, because there's been a lot of misinformation out there. This past election ultimately was asking who should be deciding if, where, when, and how many marijuana establishments should be allowed in the township. It wasn't asking you if you think marijuana should be legal, or to use it, or if you think there's medical benefits or not. It was just about the industry. Around eighty percent of the communities in Michigan have chosen to be cautious and have opted out, at least temporarily. Do they know something? We don't. I mean, maybe they're just being cautious. I feel four people on this board have been a kind of reckless with regards to this ordinance thus far, and as a couple people mentioned today here at Public Comment, that if we are going to move forward, why not vary baby steps? Maybe take one type of business, iron it out, see how it works, as opposed to opening Pandora's Box here. The current ordinance, in my opinion, is far too radical and hands the vast majority of the township over to the marijuana industry. Now, there have been accusations as to my behavior in this matter, and it serves my personal interests. Well, I don't, maybe, I don't, I guess maybe it does. Here are some examples that I want to talk about regarding the oath of office. To be a member of the Board of Trustees, I took an oath. I swore to support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Michigan. And it's very important that we realize we have a republican form of government, a constitutional We sort of, we swear to uphold the laws and to represent the interests of the people, of which more than one thousand voters did agree. We don't have a democracy. It's not mob rule. Here are some examples of what that oath of office means to me. If the majority of people were in favor of killing babies born and unborn, as a representative, I would stand against that. I would stand against the majority and defend life, because we have a republic. Even if the majority of people were in favor of banning guns, I would firmly defend and have defended the people's right to keep and bear arms. If the majority of people come here and were in favor of prohibiting us from saying an invocation before the meeting, I wouldn't have, I would and I have defended the free exercise of religion, the First Amendment. And just because you believe that because I'm a trustee, that I don't have a right to petition the government for redress of grievances, that it's not my constitutional, that's not what the Constitution says. I don't feel that, and I don't feel that exercising my constitutional rights should nullify any of my duties as a trustee, including my right to vote on particular items. There's another thing, just briefly, I will mention something else. We talked today a couple of... I don't feel that, and I don't feel that exercising my constitutional rights should nullify any of my duties as a trustee, including my right to vote on particular items. There's another thing, just briefly, I will mention something else. We talked today, a couple attorneys did mention it, called the public, that there are concerns with apparently unreasonably impractical and restrictions on distances between businesses. There has been caution that if a municipality limits the number of marijuana establishments, and if the state of Michigan issues qualified licenses to qualified applicants, but the municipality actually has less opportunities for these qualified applicants, and the municipality now needs to pick winners and losers, that opens you up to potential litigation. While there may be a good reason to limit the number, as we've talked about limiting the number, the community that chooses to do so better be prepared to defend itself challenges from unsuccessful applicants. I want to add one last minor detail here. Evidently, persons that are convicted in trafficking of large amounts of marijuana would be eligible for municipal marijuana establishment licenses. So, in other words, persons in the past who have a conviction of trafficking in large quantities of marijuana evidently would be eligible for licenses. Now, not that marijuana is a big, big deal, but obviously there was laws that were ignored then. What else did I want to comment on? One other thing is, there are many of us that, there are people that think that the yes vote lost. I want to say that there are many who were working on the yes vote campaign that are very concerned that the community lost. Thanks again for coming up tonight.
Thank you. I guess everybody has said something but me. I won't carry it on too much longer, because I do want us to get some business done, but we only have put letters in the packet where the actual writer has asked them to be in the packet. If the board wants to change that, that's fine, and that's why Ms. Scholl's letter was in, and that's why, at this point, Mr. Warburton's letter was in. If anyone wants their letter in the packet, please say so when you send it, or email it, and it will go in the packet. Some people like the privacy. You all know that about the meeting at this point to actually determine the ballot language, and we were required to do that before the 13th, and there was nothing inappropriate about that. So, the charges that people have been making out there, they are not correct, and it's really unfortunate. Yes, we don't agree on some things, let's respect each other, we don't have to call each other liars and cheats. That's inappropriate and unacceptable. So, I will respect your thoughts, but I would also ask that you respect our thoughts, too. We're not all alike, and that's the beauty of our country, is we can bring these thoughts out, and we can work on solutions together. Thank you. So, this vote that we just took, I was glad it was on the ballot, because we've got some closure, and that's why I voted for it in the beginning. And, yes, I did collect three signatures, my own, my husband's, and a friend's. So, that's, that's all, that's my transparency, and other than that, I can, I can do that as a private citizen. Okay, so, we'll move on now. I'll make a motion to adopt the, well, motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'm going to ask for a recess.
Oh, you need, need a recess for a moment?
Yeah, well.
Do we have a second on the recess?
Support.
Okay. Motion for recess and second by Ms. Bellager. Anybody, well, have any comment? All in favor, say aye.
Five minutes?
Five minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody disagree? Okay, five-minute recess, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, there's something in there.
Like to call this meeting back to order?
We all see it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Manley.
Is there things you want to pull out of their way?
And we have a comment that Mr. Wagner would like to make, associated with the police? Or fire?
Fire, actually.
Fire, go ahead.
Well, one police, one fire. So, Mr. Docket asked me to-
Can we have it quiet out there so we can hear? If you'd like to discuss anything, please go out in the lobby. Thank you.
Mr. Docket asked me to speak on PFAS, that occurs in the firefighting foam that's contaminating a lot of drinking water in Michigan, and the Northfield Township Fire Department did have PFAS in their firefighting foam. All that foam has been removed off of the trucks, and we're waiting to hear from the state fire marshal. They are going to go to all the fire departments in Michigan and collect that and properly dispose of it. If for some reason we were to need, and we haven't replaced that foam yet, but if for some reason we were to need that firefighting foam, which is typically for hydrocarbon fires, your gasoline tankers, or an alcohol-type fire of a tanker, we are fortunate at Station Two that we host the foam bank for all the fire departments in Washtenaw County. So, we have, and that is the appropriate foam for, that doesn't contain the PFAS. So, Mr. Docket asked me to speak on that. The other thing he asked me to talk about, too, was the drug takeback that we assigned two police officers to, I think it was October 19th. We did get reimbursed from that today from the U of M, so while we did have, pay a couple of officers to be there, we have been reimbursed for it, and I submitted that check today. So, those were the two things he asked me to speak on. And if there is anything else anybody needs, otherwise, I don't have anything else on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Bellager.
Yeah, I have a question. Have you, I don't recall if we've asked you to provide us some kind of report on the potential costs, or the cost impacts that you may, that the department may see with implementation of the marijuana ordinances?
Nobody has asked me that, and I'm not even sure how I'd go about creating such a document without knowing what the state, state's rules are going to be. I think once the state sets their procedures and rules in place, then we'll have a better idea of what that will be.
So, we don't know if it would impact your current, if your current budget would handle the potential increase? I mean, you don't know, I guess.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Any, so we literally have to wait till after the state comes up with rules, before you can try to determine some kind of numbers, if there is any increase or not, or you may-
Well, that and whatever ordinance is created here at the township level as well.
Okay, so it's a combination of both. All right, great, okay.
I think, too, it's almost like looking at a crystal ball and determining, is there going to be any crimes because of this? Is there going to be any problems because of this? I mean, we can't look at a crystal ball and do a lot of what-ifs, but, you know, I think you could, we do have LawNet here, we do have a federal drug enforcement agent on board. I think we have it covered.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more, Mr. Docket, go ahead.
Oh, I only have a statement for the sewer department. I noticed that about six, seven weeks ago, when they had all the storms, they had 100 hours overtime, and I'd like to say this month, they only have 30 hours overtime, so Kito's doing, he's doing a good job on that. The minutes, I'm going to have to pull the minutes.
Okay. Well, let's correct them, and then we'll adopt the consent agenda. What kind of issues do you have with the minutes?
Well, my issue is, on, that on the special meeting, the other, the regular meeting-
Okay.
We talked about the $17,000 raise on the insurance at our last meeting, and I and some others, I had some support on it, but it doesn't mention it in the meeting, in the minutes. So, I will not be voted to okay these minutes until the $17,000. Why are we hiding it from the public? $17,000 raised, all I have to do is put it in the minutes. Why is it not there? That's what I am asking.
Yeah, I guess. Okay, what do you want adopted to be changed, Mr. Docket?
I don't want anything to be changed, I want it to be added that the insurance went up. I don't want the one, 2% or 2.7%. I want the figure. It went up $17,000. That's what I want in the minutes, and I can't, and I think that most everybody else on the board said the same thing, but it doesn't get in the minutes.
Okay, do you recall, Mr. Ains, what the actual difference was, so that we could add that to the minutes?
That's the figure he gave.
Okay.
That sounds accurate. I'd have to go back to make 100% sure, but I would suggest you put it in the minutes that way, because if there is a problem, I'll bring it back.
Well, plus a minus, I don't care, but I mean-
We can't put it in the minutes if we don't know for sure.
Can we say, can we approximately 17,000?
Approximately 17,000.
Would that be good if we said approximately 17,000?
Okay.
I'd like to get something in there, yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, I mean, I'm not going to vote for it if it isn't in there. It doesn't mean it's not going to pass.
Wait.
Thank you.
Okay, so we could add a sentence after Ains recited the old and new dollar amounts for each plan, and they amounted to approximately $17,000. Increase, yeah.
And there was a promise that next year, we would have the insurance man here.
Right, we did say that, too. Was that in the minutes? No.
And I did already tell him you expect him next year as a board.
Okay.
We only have one more year to go after tonight, and we're to be off this board.
Okay.
I told him to put it in his calendar.
Thank you.
Okay, so did you get that amendment, Ms. Lumbo?
They're adding, and they amounted to an increase of approximately $17,000.
Right. Okay, great. Does anyone else have any more questions about any of the consent agenda? Go ahead, Ms. Zolak.
Wastewater Treatment Plant. Just, I didn't realize that Tactra Truck moved in and started surveying the plant in preparation to putting up the retention tank. I thought it was to do the engineering for the retention tank.
Study.
Design study.
Design study.
Yeah, that's what they had to do to start the design. They have to know where it's going and where everything sits on the plant property.
Okay. Let's see, who else? Is the manager's report in there? Yes, can you pull that? I have a couple of questions on the manager's report. Go ahead.
So, again, it came up about the process, so in the marijuana-related business, Paul Lippens' planner and I will be working on the administrative procedures and forms needed for this. Have you started, Ms. Ains?
I've discussed it with the planner, and he's been through this in other communities, so he has a plan that they've used as a template, and he and I have discussed it, but our focus up to now was to get this in the packet, the actual ordinances, and get adopted. It's my understanding from the date that it's published, they don't go into effect till 30 days thereafter, and so what I had understood from the prior motion was that we were to prepare those in time for that, and it's been mentioned by Ms. Elnek that she would like to have that before the board, before it would be put in effect, so we're looking at the 10th of December to put it before the board.
Can we do it at, at least see where you are at our next meeting? Because-
Yeah, I would like to see a draft at least at the next meeting.
So I'll make a motion that we have a draft of the administrative procedures and form needed for the marijuana businesses at our next board meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Zelnak and support by Ms. Chick to have a draft.
A draft of what exactly?
Administrative procedures.
Oh, administrative procedures.
For marijuana applications, I guess. Do we have any more discussion on this item? Ms. Manley?
Is the thirty days that it would become an effect, is that true? Can we verify that? Paul?
Yes, there's a publication requirement.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So it's actually, we would anticipate it being in the Ann Arbor paper the Sunday following today if you were to pass something tonight. And then it's thirty days from that point, which puts us about December 17th.
Okay. My only concern-
What's the date of the seven, what's the date of the December meeting? There's only one.
It's the 10th.
The 10th, okay, so it'll be after that.
Okay.
Thank you.
My only concern is it's like a week. That's only about a week for Mr. Ains to get that together. I know it's-
I'm sorry, this has been going on for quite a long time.
Okay.
We have had time to get ready for this.
Right, I mean, three weeks have already passed, so. And again, tell me what event, what item in this township has brought out so many people and have gathered so much attention that it needs to be done? Based on agendas and other things, I am concerned and the product will be delivered.
We can get something to the board by the next meeting, but realize with about five days of actual time, we'll get it to you as best we can, but it may still be a draft form.
I agree. Three weeks have passed.
I'm sorry, but the board keeps telling us a lot of things that need to be done right away and we're trying to do the best we can, so.
Well, again, to me, as one board member, it's excuses. And again, name one other item, maybe the sewer basin, but that's an engineering development because that's an eight million dollar potential expense that is more important than this.
I agree.
And if there's templates already, this isn't like inventing the wheel. It's not like you're reinventing it.
We have a planner down at the end who says, yes ma'am. Thank you. Okay, well, I'll just expect you to meet with Mr. Lippens soon to get that going, I guess. Okay, so we have a motion. Can we do a voice vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What's the motion?
The motion is to have-
Go ahead, manager.
The motion was to have Mr. Ains and Mr. Lippens work on the procedure for the applications for the marijuana.
Could we use a little bit stronger language?
Well, I don't know, Ms. Lumbel has the motion.
I think we need something more, more like you, a little more forceful.
I think I was, Mr. Dockett. I said, I would like to see the administration procedures in forms for the marijuana businesses at our next meeting. That's pretty forceful.
That's pretty good.
Don't you think?
Okay.
But you can add to it, though.
Okay, Ms. Bellinger?
No, just ready to vote.
Okay, alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, seven, zero. Thank you.
No.
Alright.
Raise your hand for no.
Yeah, we're still on the consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we're still on the consent agenda.
Well, both people are still here.
I could still have the floor, don't I, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I guess you would unless you're done. No, you're not done, okay, go ahead.
So, the code enforcement, so the staff and I have spent a great deal of time resolving. Who's working with you on that, Mr. Ains?
Jim Turner, the code enforcement officer, and I are working on it together. And then we bring in Kirk, who's the Burt Building official or any other building people we need or any of the consultants. And ultimately, it comes down to if somebody doesn't comply, then it's a legal matter and it's brought back to Mr. Burns. And then at some point, it's brought before the board to authorize proceeding, to authorize the money needed to prosecute.
So, my question, do we have a procedure in place? Meaning, how many times do we notify a person or a business that they're not compliant? Is it one, two, how many, and before? So do we have a procedure that indicates you, we'll send out two notices, then it comes back to the board for legal action?
I think you don't have that set procedure. Partially, you want us to deal with individual cases in a manner which gets it accomplished without going through legal. But there's quite a number of items that we presented to Mr. Burns for the next meeting. If he feels that they are capable of being prosecuted, then to ask the board.
Well, personally, I think we need to have a procedure. We need to tell the public that this is the expectation. We're either going to send out one, two, three, whatever it's determined, and the next step will be go to court. So do we have a procedure or not?
We do.
Okay, can we, can I get a copy of that procedure then? And I want to make sure we're following it because it doesn't sound like we are.
Well, some of those are spelled out in ordinance. For instance, snow removal, which is a current issue on sidewalks, or responsibility of the homeowner or the businessperson. And there are set deadlines of twenty-four hours or less, depending on the type of operation it is. Generally, we have gone to people with the code enforcement officer to talk to them before we send out a notice. And so that's one situation, but there's other things that we follow in different ways, so.
I'm more concerned on blight. And people not, you know, complying to blight. So what's our procedure on that? If it's an ordinance, can you send me the ordinance?
Well, for instance, the one we hear most about is the property that Mr. Dockett made sure, I don't refer to as Barker and Main Street because it might be misconstrued. But the former Marina, we were given a date that the contractor was going to tear down the building. Prior to that, the fire department conducted inspection, gave notice, building department, Kirk also. And we have verified that they have had the electric disconnected, the gas. And as they do the demolition, they'll have to get Dan's people inspected during the course of the demolition and make sure that's handled properly. And we've asked them about the demolition permit, which I would have to check with Mary to verify whether that came in or not. She's been off for a few days now, so I don't know what's come in, what time she's been gone. The house that's over by the 23 in Barker, they were given notice. They did comply to some degree with the cutting it. It has to be a structural defect or a substantial outside issue. And, you know, we're looking at those. There's about four structures in there. You know, we keep giving you different reports on other projects as well that are underway.
I guess it really comes down to what is our procedure on that? Is it two notices, then we have to take you to court because you're not complying? Is it, we just wait until you comply? I'm personally, maybe we can discuss this, but I'd like an answer and I'm not getting one satisfactory to myself.
Okay, can, can- Can we- Right, can we let, does anybody have anything for police, fire, and wastewater? So we can let them go?
Yes, for chief, I think. Another question on the idea of an impact study before, apparently we need to have the rules from the state and from our own ordinance figured out before you can actually attempt to generate a potential impact study for your department on the costs of approving the marijuana ordinances and bringing the businesses into the township. This is what I understood you to say.
Right, I, because I don't know what the responsibilities of the police and fire department exactly will be until we see those ordinances and rules and regulations from the state.
Okay, that, that to me, I think that we should receive an impact study to help us understand how this may impact our community before we do set a date to approve these ordinances. Does anyone, I do not know when the state will have rules completed. Obviously, we're struggling here at the township getting everything in line. It would only make sense to attempt to do some form of an impact study of various types. Maybe there's other ones that need to be considered as well, maybe environmental, I don't know. Before we move forward with adopting any kind of ordinance, that could be so, I want to say so significant in our community. I think would be the responsible thing to do would be to consider these impacts. I mean, I would actually-
Do we have a motion, manager?
That's it, are you making a motion?
I could.
That's just something we're gonna, we can consider when we-
I think we should make a motion if we get, I could wait till we get to the actual ordinances or I could make a motion now.
Let's, that's when we get to the ordinances.
I'd like to ask Dan, have they disconnected the sewer at Marina? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The answer's no.
Correct, thank you.
Alright, and I have a quick question for wastewater. What do you take out of the water as it comes in? Are you capable of removing chemicals and, say, pesticides or anything like that that comes through the water?
We don't test for pesticides coming in, so there's no way of knowing what we can remove that way. What are you thinking about?
Because marijuana establishments can't put the water into the wastewater treatment plant unless they get permits and the wastewater treatment plant is able to manage the chemicals.
Once, once we get some businesses coming online, we will have to test to see what they're going to discharge. And typically, we get high phosphorus, stuff that you would get from grow houses. That would be the only thing we would look at. And maybe there would be a surcharge if they're putting an excessive amount of something.
Okay.
We can handle just about anything they give us, though.
Okay, as long as you have capacity, too. Okay.
Yes.
Alright, that was my, does anyone else have any more questions for Mr. Wagner or, I'm just, or wastewater? Dan, okay. Is everybody good? Okay, feel free to leave. Thank you.
Good night.
Alright, good night. Okay, any more questions on any of the consent agenda items? Because we have a motion on the table. Okay, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda as amended with the meeting minutes? Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that passes. Seven, zero, okay. The next item is to adopt the balance of the agenda. I would like to make a motion to move number seven and eight to the, to the front of the agenda, provided we don't leave the meeting before we get through number six.
Well, I would recommend to move it to number two and three.
Which one?
We can go through the payment of the open bills first because we can't do government without paying our bills.
We should be able to just go through those in five minutes, actually. All of those other ones.
So I would recommend to move seven and eight up to two and three.
Oh, that's the update on the sewer backup? Well, that's just an update. Are you, are you staying for that, Mr. Willis? No, I don't think so.
If I could comment, the parties involved have indicated they cannot make the meeting tonight. And the claims adjuster has been to their home but has not given us a report. So I had recommended that be tabled.
Okay, and that's all totally fine.
What, not good with table?
I don't want to table.
I'm good with it. You're not, you don't want to table it?
Okay.
Okay, well, alright, we're moving seven and eight up to, between one and two. Yeah, we've got a new business coming in. I want that, I want that passed tonight, so.
And then I would like to have number three moved up right after that.
I think if we just move on, we could get it done.
We can get it done in no time.
Can we just move six and seven up right now?
Yep.
No, five and six.
Five and six, whatever. Seven and eight, right, sorry.
Seven and eight.
Okay, we're doing one, then seven and eight, then three, then we're going through the rest.
And then I have another question, though. Do we not have to, based on our recommendation from our lawyer, that we have to put in the opt-out ordinance?
Well, we're going to get that at the end when we're talking.
It's not even on the agenda.
Yes, okay. Make a motion to add the opt-out?
Right.
Okay, yes. So that will be number nine, but it's going to be after number eight, after number one and- Okay.
If we just go in the order that it's there.
We would be, well, can we, can we not rearrange these things after all?
No.
We'll be done in no time. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as distributed.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Bellinger.
As distributed?
As distributed.
As distributed. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call. Chick?
No.
Otto?
No.
Manley?
Yes.
Chalkley?
Yes.
Zelnak?
No.
Dockett?
No.
Bellinger?
Yeah. Okay, that failed. Alright, so we're going to do number one, then number seven, then number eight, then the newly added number nine.
Correct.
Which is the opt-out ordinance. Then number three, then number two, four, five, and six.
I just ask that you please announce before we do them which item we're on.
Yes, I will.
Please.
Alright, number one. Oh, okay.
You got a motion on the table, right?
So we have a motion to rearrange the agenda items.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
No, no, you need a support. Did you get support?
Oh, okay.
I'll support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Otto. Any more discussion?
There is discussion, again.
Go ahead.
Who jab is it to do the agenda?
If I could address the board on that?
Go ahead, Mr. Ryn.
The supervisor was out of town for part of this. Jennifer and I were looking at the agenda. It was not intended to be a slap in the face at anybody, but you have a individual, a couple that had the sewer backup and the board told me it needed to be on the agenda tonight. So, we thought it would be best to get them in and out quickly and, as I said, they're not able to attend. We then looked at the new business coming in and felt that all of you expressed support for the new business and you could rapidly approve that. The bills have to be approved to run things, the amendment you tabled last meeting. So all these are things, and then the sale of the property, I've recommended be tabled. So all these are things that I thought you could go through very quickly and accommodate some of the individuals that were involved. And then get into the discussion of the marijuana. As you see, it's already quite late and the tendency in the past has been the items that are after the marijuana get tabled to a succeeding meeting. And what it's done is clogged up the whole system of getting other business done. So, you know, if you want to change it, that's fine. But these things are, in my opinion, urgent to either table or take action on.
Well, personally, that's not good enough. It's not good enough answer when I look at all the people here. And, and-
Just add an election.
And we just had an election. But not even the money. We had the people. We need to respond to the people and this isn't good enough. And I, I, that's not probably true. It's just not good enough. So, put more effort into the order of the agenda so we're not changing them at the meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion by Chalkley, support by Otto, to change the order of the agenda. the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that passes. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve payment of the open bills with the expected check run date of 11/13/19 for a total of $159,338.40 from all funds in the municipal investment fund account.
Support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Manley. Any discussion? Manley?
Manley.
Any discussion?
Yes, what did I say? Hundred and sixty thousand it cost the good people out there for the last thirty days. Quite a lot of money, thank you.
That's just a statement, Mr. Docket. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that passes, seven zero. Okay, the next item is number seven. Ordinance 1966.
It's gonna take us some time to find it.
Okay, yep. Okay, Ms. Chick, did you wanna make a motion or change or whatever?
I would like to make a motion to allow marijuana provisioning centers to locate in the Whitmore Lake District downtown and the Whitmore Lake District waterfront.
I'll support.
Ms. Chick has made a motion to, well, you know what it is, with a second by Ms. Otto. Discussion. Okay, Ms. Manley?
So, we just got the, some information on this, so can we go through the process again, Mr. Lippens? It's like it was approved, it wasn't approved? Or whoever's here from McKenna?
Yes, good evening. My name is Mario Ortega, and I'm with McKenna, so Paul apologizes for not being here tonight. With regards to this issue and the order, there was just some confusion as to whether this would be included in the previous motion. So in order to clarify things, it'd be best to make a motion to allow for these two uses within this district, in keeping with your past practice of listing uses by district through a motion.
So there was a motion in the past that failed?
Three, three?
Correct.
Three, three?
Correct.
To allow them in the Whitmore Lake Downtown and the Whitmore Lake Waterfront District. And, so now you're, you wanna make a motion to put them back there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're discussing that part of it.
Could I make a friendly amendment to that, just to exclude the Whitmore Lake North Village?
Well, it's not mentioned, so it wouldn't be included yet.
It wasn't included.
Well, I think in the one draft, we did show it as excluded.
Well, are we voting on this new draft?
No.
Which, which draft are we voting?
Again.
We don't have the right one in our packet?
Yes, we did have the right one, or we had to, yes.
We have the right one now, according to Mr. Lippens.
Right.
Which is which one?
It's the one in your-
Yes, and now it was in our packet?
Yes, the one in the packet. Was the right one?
Yes.
The, the original one in the packet?
That's correct. The only one in your packet.
Well, we just got two more.
Which one was in your packet?
It's my understanding that ordinance number 19-66 that was included in your packet lists retail marijuana and provisioning centers in the-
Yeah, just like it was.
Do you have a page number? To make sure we're on the same document?
Page number four.
Top of page number four. That chart is in keeping with what's normally listed in your zoning ordinance, and it does list marijuana retailers and provisioning centers as conditional uses in the D and W district, and is not permitted in the NV.
Good.
So that's one of them. I can't mind it.
Okay, you're on page four, which section? D, E, F, G, H?
The very top of the page.
That one wasn't in the packet, the one, so the one that I think our planner is referring to is the one that we were given tonight.
Yes.
Cause my D says something about article-
The one that in the packet is we're going to add these districts.
1966. Thank you.
Is it right now just general commercial? Am I looking at the right one?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the correct version should list paragraph D at the bottom of page three for the Whitmore Lake District, WLD. And then it continues on the top of page four with the chart that lists the, the dis, the sub- sub-areas-
Oh, the chart.
-within WLD.
We don't have the charts on what we received.
The one that you got today has it.
This is the one I got today.
No.
It's 1966, and it says with WDL downtown on the top of it.
Okay.
But that's not what we got in our packet.
That's correct.
Okay. So I can throw this one away.
You're on page four, the very top, section D. Oh, okay, now it's E instead of D, all right.
No, it's D. D is on page three.
Okay, this is what I got. Here, let me show you.
Uh-uh, geez.
Okay, this one was in my packet, at page four.
Yep.
This is what was on my desk. Starts with an E, on page four.
That's the one you need. This is the one you-
I don't have one of that at all.
You don't have this one? No, you don't.
You do.
Yeah, I don't wanna do it. This one, this-
That one right there. Look and see if you have an additional one.
It was something that was here today.
Yes, that we just received.
Why do they have the same number on them? Same ordinance number?
It's the same ordinance number, they just are different versions.
If I could explain a little bit in talking with the planner, I had a call from one of the people who wanted to establish a marijuana retail in the business district downtown, and he had been watching it pretty closely, and he brought up that the document you were given in September had a provision that allowed it. But then, Mr. Lippens, the only thing he could find was last July when you had that tie vote. So as a result of a proponent wanting it, and the fact that it wasn't, as far as we could tell, it wasn't officially added, then that's why he's provided a new alternative that wouldn't add it and the language for it. Now, the other part is, in doing that research, he found that he had misnumbered, like you go A, B, C, D, E for each category, and he found that he had lumped two of those under one letter. And so that meant when he corrected it in what you got today, it had the impact of having other paragraphs with the letter changing, not the content. But it wouldn't have been discovered if we had not had a proponent bring it to our attention. And again, we're just trying to avoid litigation.
He brought it to the attention, too. Yeah, yeah, the board did.
Okay. Ms. Chick?
Okay, so currently, we do not allow provisioning centers or recreational marijuana in the downtown district. So my motion is to allow marijuana provisioning centers to locate in Whitmore Lake District downtown and Whitmore Lake District waterfront.
Correct.
Okay, so that's what we need to vote on.
Okay.
And you got support, right?
And she got support by Ms. Otto. Chick and Otto, okay. All right, I have a comment on here, though. This says uses permitted, and it should say conditional uses. So on D, instead of uses permitted, it should say conditional uses.
I think the whole thing's conditional uses, huh?
Everything's conditional. So permitted is way different than conditional. Even though you've got your little chart with the Cs there, it should say conditional uses.
If I may, the, the, consistent with the other uses listed in the chart in the WLD district, that's the method you've chosen to use. So the, the letters designate the formal approval process. So with the Cs being there, they would require conditional use approval for these two.
Okay, we'll have to see how this-
It defines it right under permitted uses.
Okay. But it, okay. Hopefully, this will turn out okay. Ms. Bellinger?
Um, have we offered a, I don't, I suppose we have, we're still working, we're not completed with this, not done with this. Have we offered any advice or, let's see, review from our township attorney as to the language and the wording and such of our ordinance as it's so far been crafted?
I'm going through these changes that we got tonight, tonight. Right? Maybe I've been through the, the rest of the ordinance, and I'm good with it.
The bigger part was the last thing you said?
I've been through everything other than what you're discussing tonight, and I think it's good to go.
Okay. Well, I have a couple other items. Okay, I know you wanna add, oh, let's vote on adding that, and we'll get that over with.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Docket.
I wanna make real sure that, that we're, instead of saying downtown, I wanna make sure that we're talking about this WLD-D. Is that correct? I would like to have it read back from, from you know-
Lisa, Lisa.
To make sure that we're on the right one. WLD-D, and don't say downtown, don't say the district.
Like you want the letters? Okay.
I want, I want it right.
Okay, and then it's WLDW as well.
That's what we're gonna vote on.
Correct.
That's what we're voting on.
So re, please read the motion one more time. Is it one at a time or both, or what are we voting on?
I won't be able to hear it because she doesn't have a microphone, but somebody can hear it.
Okay.
I make a motion to allow marijuana provisioning centers to locate in the WLD-D downtown and the W, and the WLD District W waterfront.
Okay. Now you realize that's gonna be, like, there could be a residence and then there could be a marijuana establishment?
That's right. That's why it's conditional.
Right. So the people on the lake may have something like that right next door. Or the people even around the corner. Would, would you be okay with a marijuana business right next to your house?
That's not the question, yeah.
Well, but that's, that's what the, the impact is going to be.
Let's call the question. Let's vote.
All right, we will call the question.
Docket?
Yes.
Chalkley?
No.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Bellinger?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
We're done. Let's go to another one.
That passed. All right. Okay. The, um, please don't interrupt. Okay, the next-
Go right ahead, I love that.
Item.
I have another one.
Go ahead, Ms. Chick.
I make a motion to allow adult-use recreational marijuana in the WLDW downtown and the Whitmore Lake, I'm sorry, WLDD waterfront district.
Where's that?
What's this? It's, it's the same motion, except it's recreational marijuana.
Oh, okay.
Adult use.
I thought it was all the same thing.
He has it in here as retail marijuana instead?
Yeah, and provisioning centers, both. Okay. All right, I guess we'll vote on that one, too? So the last one was medical?
I'll support.
Okay.
First one was medical.
Okay. Motion by Chick, support by Otto. Okay, roll call.
We're gonna read it back.
Except the North Village.
Are we sure we're on the right?
Yes, that's there, too.
Lisi, did you get that? Are you excluding the North Village?
Excluding the North Village.
Well, it's, it's not listed, so it would include it.
Adult-use marijuana.
Yes.
You'd say you did.
Yeah.
Is that what they're calling it?
Okay. Roll call.
I have a question. So is adult-use marijuana the correct wording?
That's according to the new regulations by the state.
Okay. And does that include or not include the North Village?
It's not mentioned, so it would exclude the North Village.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Otto?
Yes.
Chalkley?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Bellinger?
No.
Docket?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, five, two.
I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion to allow grows of over 500 cannabis plants to locate in the research, technology, and manufacturing district.
Grows, okay.
So, okay, growers grow over?
Over 500 plants.
Can you re, please repeat which district again?
RTM.
RTM.
Research tech, research, technology, manufacturing district.
And I'll support.
That's all grows?
Over 500 plants.
All of them?
The large ones, yes.
Medical and recreation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, is this a change? Or is there something that was missed?
It's new.
No.
Did we exclude this at one point?
It's not included.
It wasn't in there.
We never discussed it, yeah.
Okay.
I've lost track of where we've been.
So there'll be a C, I guess? Processor, safety, compliance, facilities, and growers over 500 plants? Or do you wanna say?
Class, can you do it by class?
Can you do it, yeah? Class C?
It would be the same as what's allowed in the general commerc, I mean, the general industrial, the light industrial.
I don't have it in front of me. Where is this district?
Right by the, no, North Territorial, east of 23 where the limited industrial is. It is-
This is Jomar?
All of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would just list it down. I'll call.
Okay, so it's, basically, it's, it's medical class B, C, and recreational C.
Yes.
Okay, can we just let, do it that way?
Yep.
Okay. Well, okay.
Did you get that, Lisa?
You're taking it longer, or you're?
I'm just designating the grows. So it's medical class C, recreational, I'm sorry.
Oh, and?
Medical class B.
B and C.
Medical class B, medical class C, recreational class C, yeah.
Okay.
Class C?
Class C. Okay.
So, it's to allow growers for over 500 plants. And I would say, which includes?
Yes.
Class B, that is.
Okay.
Is there any other support for that?
I support it. Okay, roll call.
Do we know why we excluded them to begin with, from the RTM?
No, we never discussed it, even at the planning commission, we didn't discuss it.
Because I, I thought at the last meeting, Mr. Lippens was going to go through his-
He actually recommended it to the planning commission, but we never discussed it.
Okay, so he did recommend it, because he was, again, going to come back to this meeting and tell us, and go through his notes to see what the discussion was on to. So, you've talked to him and he's indicated that he thought it would be a good location for it, but he never recommend, or the planning commission never-
Yeah, he actually said at the last meeting that he recommended it, but it never went anywhere.
Okay, because I thought he was going to look at it, but, okay.
That's where they took us this long to figure that out.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Bellinger?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I had my mic off.
All right, that passed.
I have two more.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 19-66 with the changes to the Whitmore Lake District downtown and the Whitmore Lake District waterfront.
Um, what is this now?
What changes?
I'm sorry.
What are the changes? The, the changes we just made.
Oh, you're just, you want to do the whole thing? Oh, okay, well, I have some things, so.
Will you give a second?
I'll second it.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Chick and support by Ms. Otto to adopt this entire ordinance, 1966, with the changes that were just made. I have some that I would like to suggest to-
Does that have a question?
You have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, we'll get that.
So, Ms. Chick, the changes that you're proposing, were these suggested to you by Mr. Lippens? Or did you come up with these yourself, or?
Well, the, the public has been asking for these businesses in the downtown area for months, so I'm honoring the public's request along with the vote to allow businesses.
That's not where I'm going.
Which one?
Were you aware of these changes, that you were going to make these before today?
Uh, yeah, like yesterday.
Okay. I would just, I would have just liked the heads up, so I could have looked at it more.
Oh, well, this, we've, we've asked, these two, first two had already been talked about at a couple of meetings, so I don't know what else would be different.
Actually, it was on the 9/24 meeting that we've discussed.
We keep voting on motions that we're not aware that we're voting on, so.
So, you know, I'd like to add, though, I mean, from a public perspective, I, I'm very appalled that we are even talking about it at this point in time, because we received from Mr. Lippens, our paid professional, on 9/24, where the ordinance had it in, the downtown district. It didn't have the RTM, but it had the WLDD and the WLD waterfront. Then we receive an ordinance on 10/8 that it didn't have it in, and we were not informed that it was, we were informed of some minor changes, but this major deletion, it was not brought to our attention at that board meeting. I get it, we read it. I didn't realize that I have to make sure deletions don't occur in things that I get back. And, um, again, I have asked for more procedures, I've asked for summaries to be put in, I've asked for changes to be documented, and it doesn't happen. So, we get, and we revisit, and we revisit. So, my question to this board is, what are we going to do to make it happen? First, how do we hold our paid professionals accountable?
Look for a new one.
So, I mean, it's to the point that it might be time to look for new planners.
Put out, put out new beds for new people.
Yes, I think we need to do that. I think we need to do that, so.
Yes, that's what we need to do.
Yes.
That's how you, that's how you correct these problems.
Okay, then, I guess after this is done, we might make a motion for that. Thank you.
Ms. Bellinger, you have a change?
I have a question and possibly a change. How many feet are we away from schools? Is it 500? Is it 1,000?
In the ordinance, it's 500.
500, okay. I would like to move to amend that.
Okay.
To 1,000 feet.
This was what I was going to bring up, but go ahead. If, I was going to bring up the 1,000-foot.
I have a few things I'd like, and more than just a single one.
Sure, go ahead.
Would you like to address one?
Well, I would just like to, I would like to address the 1,000-foot buffer. I haven't seen another ordinance for marijuana that is lower, has smaller than 1,000-foot, and it's because of the drug-free zone. And, um, so, federal law and state law, and I put this out in an email to y'all, that they both say there should be a 1,000-foot buffer from schools, and the state one says, "and libraries." So, um, you know, you could say, "Oh, well, let's just have it at 500," but when state and federal law calls for 1,000-foot, what I, you know, that's, that's a problem for me. And Ms. Chick, you said something else, there was some new rule or something, but-
We were, already received information on this at a previous meeting, that the township can adopt any kind of a buffer for their municipality. It doesn't have to go according to what anybody else does. It can be, we adopt our own municipality. The city of Ferndale has a 500-foot buffer, city of Inkster has a 500-foot buffer, Wald Lake, Oakland County has 500, Bay City has a 500. It, you know, you can establish your own.
So, they're in violation of state and federal law, then?
This is the, this is new regulations from the state, which probably overrides the other.
It overrides the Public Health Code?
Probably. Because the Marijuana Act stands on its own, just like when we talked about the election laws and the election, and the election is that it stood on its own when it, when we had to have either initiative or a referendum. That's, it was the same thing.
How many foot buffer in Ann Arbor?
So, you have asked for some clarification regarding allowable buffer zones for use in the siting of marijuana facilities under the Medical Facilities Licensing Act, MMFLA, PA 281 of 2016, and under the new Michigan Regulation and Taxation Act, BRTMA, Initiated Law 1 of 2018. These are new state regulations.
Can I, can I get in on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
We do not have to reinvent the wheel. We use the same thing for marijuana that we use for alcohol. We already have the whole thing. There's no difference between this and alcohol. So, I believe we should have exactly the same, we already have it. We don't have to go into a big, uh, two or three months more thinking about it. What is wrong with having that the same as alcohol?
Well, the law is in my, in my book, so that's, that's my recommendation, is we go ahead to the one, back to the 1,000-foot buffer.
So, Paul, can you tell us if the Public Act code over supersede the Marijuana Act?
I don't think the law's been settled. And so, but if it is, the doctrine of preemption is what the supervisor's talking about, some court will decide it. But there's no appellate decisions on that issue.
Um, I'll, well, I'll let you finish your items that you'd like to-
We, I'd like to move to increase the buffer zone around schools to 1,000 feet.
Don't we have a motion on the floor, Madam Chair?
Pardon?
Don't we already have a motion on the floor?
Um, yeah, what is it to support? Oh, yeah, for, for that, but now we're doing amendment.
Do we not have to vote on the motion on the floor?
No, if we're going, if we're voting for an amendment, we do the amendment for us.
That's a buffer amendment, that's the-
Okay, so is Ms., is Ms.?
It's going to change this.
Is Ms. Bellinger making an amendment to the motion?
I'm attempting to amend the article before we accept it.
Yeah.
The ordinance before we accept it.
Okay, get a support.
If this is what we're doing, is discussing this ordinance, this is the time to make suggestions, amendments, or attempt to make amendments, now is the time, this is what I'm attempting to do.
Okay.
I have a couple to make as well.
Then, get a second, let's move on.
I'll second it. So, we have a motion by Ms. Bellinger and support by Ms. Chockley to amend the buffer-
Increase the buffer zone.
Increase the buffer from schools. Are you adding libraries?
I'm doing schools right now, to 1,000 feet.
Just schools?
Yeah.
Okay. To 1,000 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Manley, you have a comment on that?
My question, I guess, would be to Mr. Burns. If this hasn't been settled yet, we change it to 500, the law comes back and says, "No, it has to be 1,000," what happens?
Right.
This is not your question, it's out there, so.
So, so the question, as a general proposition, state law preempts local ordinances. So, state law does. But it's not clear, there's no appellate cases where this is a carve-out, and the doctrine of preemption may not apply in this particular instance because it's a standalone publicly adopted referendum.
So, we could make the wrong call, either way.
But the law, you, if it is preempted, the law will straighten it out.
It was not a referendum.
Well, ballot proposal.
It was not a referendum.
I understand what you're saying.
Well, did you misspeak? Did you misspeak?
Yes, I said referendum.
Thank you.
I should have said ballot proposal.
Okay. Well, I'm going to vote with state and federal law, and so I'll be, I'll be voting yes on the amendment.
My like, conversation is, we have talked about this time and time again, and it's always a four-three vote, so we'll get another four-three vote.
Okay, let's do it. Not always, not always.
Okay.
Roll call.
Sorry. Bellinger?
Yes.
Otto?
No.
Manley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Chick?
No.
Docket?
No.
Chockley?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I move to, I move to add public parks to the existing 500-foot buffer. So, I move to include public parks to the one, to the current 500-foot buffer zones around medical and recreational marijuana businesses in Norfield Township.
We're not even doing schools.
They're already taking out the North Village.
We currently have it on 500 feet for schools.
Can we get a second?
Yeah, we have 500 feet for schools.
So, I'm adding public parks.
Okay. I'll support that.
Is this for everything?
Kids hang out, yeah.
Is this for a specific?
It's just for parks.
The public parks, I said.
Oh, I can see that we're just going to go right down the line on, next is daycare, next is-
Right. Can we just make one motion?
Daycare is next. Well, then, just put them all together.
Well, announce them all, let's get on with it. I don't think we should have to do one, 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 one.
Weekend, if Ms. Bellinger wants to.
That's right.
Let's get support.
Go, go ahead, if you, if you just want to do one at a time, I'll support the parks.
Okay, did we get a second?
Let's vote on this, yeah, we just did.
I seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Public parks.
Parks, which we don't really have.
No, we, we will down at the North Village.
But we've already took out the North Village. That'd be 500 feet from the-
500 feet from the North Village. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got one?
Ready? Yep. Sorry. Otto?
No.
Chockley?
Yes.
Chick?
No.
Manley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Okay.
One more motion, I would like to move to add daycare facilities to the 500-foot buffer zones around medical and recreational marijuana establishments in Norfield Township.
That's-
Daycare facilities.
I'll support that. Okay, any more discussion? Roll call, please. Docket?
No.
Chockley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Otto?
No.
Chick?
No.
Manley?
Yes.
Okay, that failed. All right, so, do you have any more?
Yes, I do. I move to disallow all marijuana establishments and adult uses as defined by the Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency from the agricultural district. This is with concerns of residents in precinct two, as evidenced by the recent vote. So, we've had numerous people speak of their concerns regarding marijuana establishments in the agricultural area. So, I am asking this board to have some sensitivities, sensitivities to the people that really do not want- I will repeat the motion, as I move to disallow all marijuana establishments and adult uses as defined by the Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency from the agricultural district.
Okay.
We did have a will of the voters in precinct two, which is primarily agricultural. Many spoke to-
Yeah. I'll second that. So, a motion by Bellinger, support by Chockley. More discussion?
So, I would just, oh, Mr. Docket has his hands up.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Docket.
What do we do about the 307 Ag that voted for us?
What do we do about the ones in the downtown that voted?
Yes.
Yeah. It goes both ways.
Good question. So, I, I'd just like to-
So, proposal one wasn't a three-way vote. It was a township vote. And what you're doing is you're segmenting out precincts.
The motion is for the agricultural district.
The proposal was for the total township.
The motion is to disallow these establishments in the agricultural, I did not say in precinct two.
What is allowed right now in Ag?
In Ag, the growers excluding medical class C, recreational class C, and medical class B.
And potentially the events and other things that we have not yet addressed.
That has not been addressed.
Yeah.
Potentially, I said.
Okay, so, not everybody in precinct two, or not everybody in the Ag area lives in precinct two, so how are you going to do, how are you going to run out those votes? She can have an opinion, right? I'm just asking.
So, if I may, I would just like to add, I, I think, I mean, we, again, 56 approved it, 44 percent did not. However, I do think the ordinance takes into some of the concern of the agricultural individuals. And I think we, I think we have addressed that, and I'm satisfied with the way it is, because we have considered their concerns and some of their opinions. So, I think we've looked at that, so I'm satisfied with the ordinance as is, and I think we have taken in consideration the agricultural, the rural votes, voters.
It, so, it, what's allowed in the Ag area will be 500 or less plants. So, it won't be the big, bigger-
Class B is 1,000. 1,000 medical, 500 recreational.
Right, so we're excluding medical, B and C, and excluding recreational C, so it's-
Do I need to beg the township board? Do I need to get on my knees and beg the township board to please?
You have a motion, Madam Chair, please.
We're just clarifying, come on.
Come on, Madam Chair.
Please consider disallowing establishments in agricultural district?
We have a motion, you got a second.
So, we had, so we have a motion by Ms. Bellinger. And I'll support that, and we'll vote.
Okay, call.
Okay, roll call. Zelenak?
What's the motion again? I'm sorry.
The motion is-
Nothing in Ag.
Shall I read it one last time?
No.
Want me to read it?
I think we're good.
I move to disallow all marijuana establishments and adult uses as defined in the Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency, um, by the agency, from the agricultural district.
Okay.
Thank you for rereading that. I... No.
Yep. Okay. Belliger?
Yes.
It's getting late.
Otto? No. Chockley?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Chick?
No.
Docket?
No.
Okay. So... It, it failed.
So, one thing I, if I may, Madam Chair, I think because there are four, we, I think, I would like to make a motion that we preclude the four new businesses...
Wait a minute, we got, we still have this one.
But isn't this, this has to go into the ordinance?
No. There's an order, the best of all.
Your mic's not on.
No, no, I...
Yeah, there's an order, it has to, but it will be, I have that motion.
Do you have it to actually in the ordinance, Ms. Chick, to preclude these four businesses?
No.
Until, okay.
No.
Maybe we can ask our attorney if we should do that.
I did.
Mr. Lippin or Mr. Burns? Do you think we should include, exclude, preclude these four until we get, um, a ordinance back and it's approved by the board?
You could, if you would like. Generally, I, I've been recommending it be remanded to the Planning Commission for review. But if you don't want these uses, the safest thing for you to do at this point in time is to exclude them.
Did you hear that, Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I, I got that.
But it's not required.
Yeah. My motion was to send it to the Planning Commission.
So, I would like to make a motion that we preclude them in this ordinance, the four emergency, until we get something back and the board approves the ordinance.
So, would we start?
Yes, so, I would like to preclude the four new businesses...
Exclude or preclude?
Preclude.
Exclude?
Yeah, exclude. Not include, it's preclude, like exclude. So, I'll say exclude. So, I would like to exclude the four new marijuana businesses, and I can write, um, read them if I can get my glasses, is, um, let's see here, temporary marijuana events, marijuana event organizer, excess marijuana growers, and, oh, sorry. Okay, so, temporary marijuana event, marijuana event organizer, excess marijuana grower, designated consumption establishments, until the Planning Commission reviews and the board adopts the ordinance to include these.
That's what I would like to do.
Is make sure it's, at this point.
Okay, I'll support.
Just to, you know, again, wait till we get something back, and then the board reviews it. Just to ensure.
Okay, I already supported that, so, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Wait a minute, how long will this take?
Well, I think that will actually...
It'll have to go back to the Planning Commission to review.
Come back to the board.
Okay, is, is it gonna be ready for the next meeting?
No.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
I'm gonna be in Florida.
You'll be back. You'll be back by the time we get this again. Don't worry. We are not going to let you miss the fun. Not at all. Plus, we'll probably need your vote.
Okay.
So...
All right, so, um, all in favor, say aye.
It's another roll call.
Can, another roll call.
Okay, go ahead.
I got a question here, yeah. Why don't we just exclude these right now until we wanna bring back up and then send them over to the Planning Commission?
Is that kinda what we're doing?
That's what, I don't know what...
Instead of sending them over there right now to the Planning Commission, do we wanna just exclude these at, at this point in the ordinance?
That's what it is.
We're excluding them right now.
We're excluding them from the ordinance.
And we're gonna have the Planning Commission look, I'm working on it.
Until the Planning Commission can review them and send back an ordinance for the board to approve.
Okay.
If they do, but, yeah, recommend.
Okay. All right, roll call, I guess. Docket?
Yes.
Belliger?
No.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Chick?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Okay, that passed six to one.
We get to the real one now?
Back to our other one. Well, I have some other items, and so, you, you all can decide if you want to consider these as part of this ordinance or not.
Just make motions.
Okay. I would like to make a motion in, uh, that recreational marijuana retailers be co-located with a medical marijuana establishment.
Got support?
Yeah. And, and that comes from, um, East Lansing.
Do you have support, Madam Chair?
Yeah. Can somebody support that so I can tell you what it's about?
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Manley.
Support, supported by who?
Manley. So, Barb Griffith and I went to the Michigan Department, I mean, Michigan Downtown Association, and they had two sessions on marijuana. And the second session, they had David Haywood, who is the Planning and Zoning Administrator for East Lansing there, and they have had medical marijuana establishments for a while. Their Planning Commission took a lot of time to, to look through this, and because they didn't want the proliferation of multiple, um, businesses in multiple places, they, they wanted the recreational and the marijuana to be at the same place, so they wouldn't, it wouldn't take up all of their space, but, um, they knew that the medical marijuana people were already there and established. So, um, so that's what they do. When a new retailer come, wants to come in, they require that they co-locate with the medical marijuana establishment. And it sorta kills two birds with one stone, right? Ms. Chick?
So, we don't have any medical or recreation in the township, and I think it would make it even more difficult for businesses to actually find someone to partner with before they could even come here? I don't wanna make it harder for people.
I think it'll be the same business, actually, and they'll just get two different licenses.
I agree, we should open it up to as many people as possible. I mean, I agree with Ms. Chick.
Okay, so, you're not interested in that? Co-location?
We made a motion, we have to vote.
All right, we can vote on it.
I just don't know about the legality of that, that's...
Well, that's what...
Thing where I would have liked to have thought about.
Yeah, that's what Lansing does, okay, and we can, we can consider it at another meeting, but I wanted to have the opportunity to tell you about that. And I did include Lan, uh, East Lansing's ordinance for you all to read. And there was another interesting part, so, I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, East Lansing actually, and, and, East Lansing actually just made their motion.
They just passed it.
They just passed it. They never had it before.
Right, they just passed it. But, the other interesting thing from their ordinance is the operators of the medical marijuana establishment shall provide an annual donation in the amount of 1% of net profits from its operations, or $5,000, whichever amount is greater to an organization qualifying for exemption from tax pursuant to 501(c)(3). "Largely benefiting the residents of East Lansing and organized and operated exclusively for the purposes of improving the lives of people with low to moderate income, conserving or improving natural resources, or preventing cruelty to children or animals." So, this was, this was interesting to me, that it was, that they are requiring this in their ordinance, and, um, I asked if that was legal, you know, because it seemed like an impact fee to me. But, I was told that it was legal, so, that's something that perhaps we could get some more information on, and, um, consider that at a future date, since I can imagine nobody's, wants to vote on that tonight.
Well, it sounds similar to, um, I think it's, uh, I'm gonna, we've looked at so many grand rep, as I think they have a good neighbor plan.
Do they?
And they, basically, if you, um, develop some kind of a project or proposal to add to the community in a different way, um, that's beneficial to the community, that you get more consideration in your application.
I, I usually, I usually don't ask for a five-minute break, but if this, if we're talking about marijuana, I'm an old man, I take water pills, I gotta go. So, uh, if we're gonna do anything with marijuana, you have to stop. Generally, I just walk out and go and come back.
Okay.
But I can't do that.
We won't vote. All right, we won't, we won't vote. But I will make a comment as you're walking out.
Yeah.
So, the one comment that I wanna make is, is this. I do a lot of work for Kiwanis, I do a lot of work for feeding the sheep in our community, and we have several establishments in our community that already provide funding. Now, you're asking, you're asking it to become one of the ordinances. We have a lot of businesses here that, that give to nonprofit. And now, you're tying the hands to a business to give to nonprofit. I, I feel that people should give because they want to, not because they're forced to.
I'm just throwing that out there for consideration at, potentially, in...
Well, the majority of our businesses in our town pay for the Fourth of July Parade. They pay for, um, they pay for the fireworks, they pay for, um, scholarships. There's a lot of things that a lot of businesses in our community pay for, and now you wanna put an ordinance on it.
Only for, only for the marijuana establishments. So, it's, um, it's just some, in, a point of information I wanted to give to the board, and if there's some willingness there on the part, um, of the board, then that, that would be interesting, because we could certainly use some, um, facade improvement, I mean, there would be a lot of different, we could use it for, um, and I know this probably, land preservation, that would be another thing, the park, that would be another thing. So, you know, it's not like we're rolling in dough here either. So, anyway, Ms. Chick?
I mean, Ms. Manley? Comment to what you made, that if they make a donation, or they are gonna do something for the community that gets some extra points? I don't, that sounds like a bribe to me. I don't like that, and I hope that we don't put that in our ordinance.
That's exactly, though, what she's doing in the ordinance, though.
You're just forcing them to pay it.
But it's not a bribe, it's in the audience.
I mean, that gets you a point system, I mean, I don't like it either way.
Yeah.
But, that sounds more suspicious to me than...
The audience is not, the audience is here for observation of our public meeting, not participation.
Yeah, right, they are. Um, the other item I wanted to bring up was, if you wanna talk out there, go in the lobby, please. The other item I wanted to bring up was that the emergency rules are expiring on January 3rd, and that there will be another, according to the executive director of the Michigan, of the Marijuana, um, license, well, the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, he said there would be 10 additional rule sets that would be coming in January to take the place of the emergency rules. So, my other concern is, are we adopting something prematurely when there could be a bunch of rules that would need to change? So, I'm, I'm just bringing that up, there was a lot of info, a lot of good information in this, um, session that I went to, and just wanted to make the board aware of that, and I do have concerns that we may be adopting something that might get changed, although we probably won't end up with a business next week anyway, or in two weeks or a month. Pardon?
What conference was this?
It was the Michigan Downtown Association. And the other thing is, so the...
Well, I'm so sorry, I missed that.
The Traverse City, um, um, DDA president was there, and, um, they don't allow any marijuana establishments in their DDA district. And I didn't hear of any, um, anyone who did, actually, so, that was another interesting point. Just putting that out there. Nope, I'm done talking, and I withdrew my other one.
You withdrew?
We do have a motion on the floor, on this floor.
We have this motion to, to adopt, uh, 1966.
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
What, what is a motion?
I, I'm gonna repeat it. I make a motion to adopt ordinance 19-66 with the changes to the WLD, WLD Downtown and the WLD Waterfront Districts and the Research Technology Manufacturing District.
Okay, well, we already did that one, didn't we?
No, we never voted on it.
We never voted on making changes.
But there was a motion by Chockley and Manley.
And, and I withdrew it.
Co-locating.
Yeah, she withdrew it.
She withdrew.
Yeah.
We're voting on the whole ordinance.
Now, we're voting on the whole ordinance, as we had already amended it, I thought.
We voted on the amendments, not on the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Now, we're voting on ordinance number 1966 with the Whitmore Lake Districts.
And the RTM.
And, and Ms. Chick, that includes the amendment that was voted on to exclude the four, okay.
Yep.
And exclude the four new business categories, referring them to the Planning Commission. Is all of that in here, or are we going to get another ordinance?
We'll have to get another one when it's all done.
I claim one. Who's gonna double verify, triple check this, that it's correct?
Yes, the version you have in front includes the WLD changes, but the, the...
RTM?
The RTM that you just, uh, discussed will be added to the new...
As well as the preclusion.
And the four will be excluded.
The exclusion.
And the four new...
As well as the exclusion, the, for the, the other four that were adopted under the emergency rules.
And our attorney's gonna review this, too?
Yes.
Can you double check that those changes are in there?
And I would say our township manager. And maybe Ms. Chick could, 'cause she's on the Planning Commission.
And Ms. Otto, just 'cause you're...
And since I absent myself for a minute, I would prefer to pass that one along, unless you wanna repeat the last 10 minutes.
No, we don't wanna repeat the last 10 minutes.
All right, go ahead. So, we have a roll call.
I got a question here.
Go ahead, Ms....
Um, we have two ordinances here, can we just get a quick explanation of the difference between 66 and 67?
Can we just hold on to the motion first?
Can we get in the motion?
Which, what happens after this is passed?
We get a new one.
We get a new one.
Hopefully, it's correct. A new copy, that's what we're just talking about, yeah.
67 is the permitting.
Yeah, it's the permits.
So, when is the vote where we actually are accepting or denying the ordinance in its entirety?
Right now, right now. That's what we're doing right now.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. So, the difference between 67 is we put it in our book of ordinances?
They're both in our book.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call. Roll call.
I got, I got a question. I, I hate almost, I'm afraid to ask it, just about, page nine, did, did we ever settle the number 10 on page nine about the times?
We're all good. We're all good.
Yeah.
We did?
Yep, we did.
Okay.
We're not talking times.
That's the only question I got.
Thank you.
Yep, we're not talking times.
Okay.
We're good.
I, I don't remember what it was, but that's okay, I don't, I don't have to know. Don't confuse me.
Well, we're not going to...
Okay, let's get to, let's get our roll call vote. Chockley? Sorry. Yeah, I, I really disagree with the Whitmore Lake Districts in there, but, other than that, um, I'll vote yes. Manley? Yes. Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Belliger?
No.
Docket?
Yes.
Passes six, one.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 19-67 to add Chapter 23 marijuana facilities to the code of ordinances. I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Chick, and support by Ms. Otto. Any discussion on this item?
Were there any changes on here that were missed? Or is this...
Not that I'm unchanged, I can't find where...
You try your support?
Otto?
Hi, I am.
Okay. Roll call.
I wanna comment.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Belliger.
I just wanna say that, uh, with the passing of these ordinances, we are unnecessarily placing the township at risk in a harm's way. And this township government will be aiding and abetting illegal drug activity. This will be redefining of the township transformational. So, there you go.
I just, I just wanna make a comment that I still feel that the numbers are too high. I know there's, we can't change it, we won't get a vote, but, we have 26 permits, 8,400 people, it just seems kind of high. But that's just my opinion. No pun intended.
Well, the fact that, you know, people laugh about that, they know it's a mind-altering material.
So is alcohol.
So is alcohol.
Yeah.
So, I mean, my comment on that is certainly for the dispensaries and stuff, we did, for me as one person, is start out with like some of the alcohol numbers and just carried it through. I mean, I think you certainly need more than one. I think three was a good start, we'll see how it goes. You certainly need, you know, competition and that was kind of my basis for coming up with what we did. I think we put a lot of thought to it, I think we've heard from the public. Obviously, you can't hear any better than on November 5th when they voted, so.
Well, as I understand it, there's no way we can get more than two downtown.
No, we can get more, not right downtown, but in the district we could.
So, I don't think that's too many.
Nope, I think we're in a good starting point.
Yep, so we have three retail facilities, three micro-business facilities and-
Three each.
Three, 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 three.
So, three each.
Better than six.
Yeah. Okay. All right, call a question.
Do you talk first? Docket?
Well, you're gonna have to redo it. If I'm first, I don't know how to-
Call me first.
Where do we vote on here?
Voting on the ordinance. The number.
On 19-62-7.
Yes.
Yes, there you go.
Thank you. Bellinger?
No.
Zellina?
Yes.
Manley, no. Chick? Yes. Chockley? No. Otto?
Yes.
Okay, that passed. 4-3, all right.
Good.
I would like to make one more motion. I would like to, and I have it on a different piece of paper. I would like, once we get the application process in place, I would like us to hire a temporary administration to assist with the permits.
I don't think so. No?
I will second it.
Okay, so you're-
I don't think that we have enough staff. We have, the staff that we have today is sufficient, but once would this permit start coming in, we're not gonna have enough staff. And I think that we could have, and hopefully, just hire temporary staff or administration to assist with the permits.
Okay.
I would only do that if we cut back the township manager's hours and spend it that way. We have a township manager, he should be leading this effort. And if we don't think he's capable, then he should not be in the position.
Okay, who's second?
Mr. Docket?
Mr. Docket, okay, so Otto and Docket. All right, Ms. Manley.
I totally agree, totally agree with you that we probably will need more staff, but finding somebody that's gonna be trained to take this on and do it correctly is a part that worries me.
It's kind of just clerical work.
Yeah. But it's, there's a lot of Ts that need to be crossed, Is that need to be dotted, and-
Well, that's what you have your plan for.
The application and the-
I guess if we had the application process and we knew what that would be, so I'd feel a little more comfortable if we knew the process before hiring somebody to do the process.
Well, the effort is, so we're thinking we don't have enough staff because we're gonna get so many applicants, then what about our current businesses that have been applying and then maybe we don't have enough staff, so I, I don't know. I think-
You have a bigger issue.
Ms. Chick.
So, Yvette, is she part-time or full-time?
She's part-time.
Isn't she looking for full-time? Or would she do full-time?
Well, I don't, she has another client, so I don't know.
She's awesome, and I mean, she would just like be like bam.
I agree, she's awesome, yeah.
And what is her hourly, what is her hourly salary? We're talking about growing government already. We're talking about adding more?
We're just talking about it.
More to the tax base. Well, right now, we're talking about growing government, right here, right now. Growing government means more, hiring more people.
The $5,000 application fees, you know, can be applied to that.
Can only be used for that.
That's what it can be used for, but we should see if she's willing to do it, but-
I, that would, I'm sorry, that would be my first thought and then-
She's fabulous.
Yeah. Just making her full-time would be, I mean, I love Yvette, I'd love to have her here full-time, but that would be pretty costly.
Yeah. Well, we have to look into it.
It'd be very costly.
I get the motion, yeah.
Yeah, okay, very costly. So, we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms., Mr. Docket to hire some part-time staff to assist.
I did support it, but I don't support a full-time person.
No, I said temporary administration.
I know, but they're talking about making somebody full-time. No, I'm not, I'm not going for that.
What's the hourly rate?
Excuse me?
What's the hourly rate? How much is it gonna cost the township, Mr. Docket?
Well, they're not gonna do, the people that's supposed to be doing it won't be doing anything, let's face it. The only way it's gonna get done is if we hire somewhere to do it, but they'll have to be under the manager.
What's our start, starting rate for admin-
For administration?
I don't know, code enforcement's 25, but-
No, I mean for clerical.
We're talking clerical.
Whatever Lisa's paying us.
Fifteen?
I would say whatever Lisa's paying us.
Yeah.
Because that's administrative.
That's Lisa.
So, Steve, what is her pay? What is her hourly pay?
Offhand, I don't have the exact amount. You could start as early as, as low as minimum wage, or if you want somebody with more experience, we would need to help it, so I could report back to you next day or two.
So, I will, I'm gonna take my motion off and bring it back and table it for the next meeting.
Because who knows when we're gonna get any applications in, I mean?
Oh, right away.
Oh, it probably will.
I'm sure we're gonna get quite a few. I mean, I've been getting phone calls that I have to talk to people, but-
Yeah, so if you can provide it to the next meeting.
I would be, I'm supporter of it on a part-time basis.
Okay, Ms. Bell-
I would, I know that.
Ms. Bellinger?
At what point and where do we talk about considering an impact study after the Michigan State Rules come into effect and after our ordinance is complete, that we ask the chief and other units of our government that we may need to talk about impact of adopting these ordinances and letting them in full force? At what point do we go forward with an impact study to help evaluate what, what we want to do?
I don't think it'll be that difficult. They've been having, we have medical marijuana dispensaries throughout the state, make phone calls to those governments and ask them what their cost of service has been. I actually started doing that, but I didn't get very far, and so I wasn't even gonna bring it up, but I did talk to a couple, basically, too, and they said they experienced no cost of service increase.
Well, I think it would be wise of us to actually do an impact study before we fully adopt and bring, bring this to the-
Well, we already did.
We already did.
It's already done.
We've already voted.
We've already voted.
Well, thank you for the consideration of the impact study I brought up earlier, thank you.
So, here's my thought, too, on impact studies. Are you gonna do an impact study when Meyer shows up and tell him they can't?
Right.
Right.
I mean, any new business-
Or any business.
Yeah, I mean, any new business is potentially going to have an impact, that's why they pay taxes.
Yep. And you don't know what that is until they're here.
And you, you know, you're not gonna know.
I hear repeated impact study requirements for sewer basin. Are you not the queen of impact studies?
That's a little bit different.
I don't, I don't think that's the same, I want to know a-
It's not a business and they don't pay taxes.
Yeah, you're talking about taxpayers paying for the-
Services.
Paying for the services.
Well, who do you think's gonna pay for increased call services, gonna be required with the marijuana businesses in the township?
You are saying something that you need a crystal ball with. You do not know that.
Mm-hmm.
And our ordinance do not call out specific police action in them.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the, we're done.
No, I removed it.
You removed it, okay. So, we can move on at this point.
Is it item number three now, or?
Uh, let me try my last.
Two?
Nine?
Two, nine?
Oh, yeah, nine, the opt-out.
Item number nine again was which item?
It's the one that's not on the agenda.
We have, oh, it was laying on the table.
Laying on the table, love it.
In front of you.
Reminder, please.
Okay.
Okay, we're on, we're on nine?
Yeah.
Which one?
Are we aware of any motions that we were asking?
And what are we going to?
So, this is to opt-out until after the legal notice has been published in the newspaper.
Do we have to do that?
We don't have to.
No.
Well, the current opt-out is expiring today.
Right.
Yeah.
And we adopted it, so we're opting in, so we don't have to pick applications for 30 days.
Yeah.
Mr. Burns has something to say.
I agree with all that, it's just that really the opt-out should expire simultaneously with the effectiveness of the zoning ordinance. So, I think you should opt-out so you don't have a hole in regulation in the, in the gap.
I would concur with that, because in addition, the MRA is accepting applications for any municipality that is not, does not have an opt-out on file. Because you have to, unlike MMFLA, MRTMA requires you to take action and requires you to opt-out. While you do have, while you've just passed your ordinance, your ordinance doesn't come into effect. So, you want to make sure that you're protected and that the applicants are protected, too, because those people that eventually will be applying, they're, they've been waiting and they've been trying to do, do this as per your ordinance, and if you don't adopt an opt-out, in theory, someone can go to Lansing tomorrow and put in an application for a facility and you would have no say in how and way that is regulated.
Okay. Okay, let's pick a sunset date, then.
I would like to discuss a sunset date for that.
The date's already in there.
Based on how many issues we've had with these paperwork and documents, I would like to give us a cushion that we're not tight and find, oh, gosh, we need to do something and then republish it or something. I don't want to be stuck with this, we've been so at the very last moment on all this every single time. I would like some kind of cushion.
I kind of want to follow up with that. I mean, if we do this to December 17th, I mean, we're running into the holiday.
We're done.
Are we gonna be staffed well enough during the holiday if people do start coming to our doors?
You better start working on it, that's what the next meeting's for. That's why I tabled it, to get more information, so you guys.
It's not you guys.
Well, what I'm trying to tell you is, I kept saying the past several meetings, is that we have to get these ordinances in place because we have to get to this point, and you guys kept saying, no, we don't have to do this, no, we don't have to do this. Well, this is why we have to do this, is because we're in the 11th hour.
Well, the fact of the matter is we-
And we have to make decisions.
The fact of the matter is we could have opted out for a year or two, wait to see how the chips fall and then jump in onto it. We didn't have to do any of this right now. That's the fact of it.
So, can I make a motion that we extend the sunset clause until December 17th?
I'll support.
And I'm doing this based on our attorney's advice, who if any legal action, he would have to be the one defending the township.
I want to see a date further out, like after-
December 17th, 2019, that's my motion.
Let's check.
It was support by Ms. Chick. Okay, discussion. I'd prefer to see January until we can see the new rules, at least.
I'm not changing them. When are the new rules out?
Well, the emergency ones expire on January 3rd.
So, they should be out before the 3rd, or by the 3rd?
I'm thinking that they will be, I thought, Andrew said they would be available in December, in draft, so, and then they'll have to take effect.
Do you want, by the way, the specific one date of what you're sunsetting, so ordinances?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Yes, probably. I'm sunsetting, it's ordinance 19-70, an ordinance to amend ordinance 18, what's?
62.
Dash 62.
Dash 62, prohibition of marijuana established ordinance until December 17th, 2019. Thank you, Lisa, for, yeah, that's what it says.
Well, 18.
1862, sorry.
Maybe it's supposed to be 19?
No, 1862, sorry. 10 o'clock, three hours later.
Okay.
Thanks for helping me out.
Okay.
It's a team effort here now.
So, we have the opt-out to vote on. Any more discussion?
And Mr. Docket?
Mr. Docket?
Is there, you know, the 17th is gonna be after the December meeting. We only have one. Is there any way we can put in there that maybe something will have to be done at the 17, at the, the meeting in December? I mean, can we, can we say that the 17th is all right, but maybe it needs to be looked at at the meeting?
We can always extend it.
Something, well, we can extend it because it'll be, it'll be, it'll evaporate after the second meeting, after the first meeting, it's only one meeting.
It'll just expire and we'll have an ordinance. It's okay.
So, they're supposed to coincide with the ordinance being in effect and, and the sunset clause, so that December 17th is when the ordinance is gonna go into effect.
Okay, all right, I get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Could we pick a date for the ordinance to go into effect? Maybe the attorney could answer some of these questions.
So, what I'm recommending is, is there's a 30-day publication period, and so, the calculation is on December 17th, is when the zoning ordinance goes into effect and it becomes the law of the township. And so, your, the sunset clause just goes to the 17th and it expires on its own and the zoning ordinance goes into effect. That's all, that's all, you don't want to have two ordinances doing the exact opposite things in place.
Okay, so there's, is there any way to delay the publication, so that it lines up maybe after the holiday? I'm just, I don't know, I'm asking because I don't know.
Well, the law is, is the 30 days from the publication date is when it goes into effect.
So, it's based on when we publish?
Normally, you'd publish as soon as you can.
Isn't there a requirement to publish within a certain time?
I believe that there is, but if you didn't want it to go into effect, you don't pass it.
Okay, that's right. That's already been done.
All right, good.
Okay. I guess we'll need a roll call on this one.
So, we're opting out to the 17th?
Yep. Lost my names. Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Zellina?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Gosh.
7-0, amazing.
7-0.
Yeah, okay.
Wait a minute, did we just agree on something?
We did.
Wait a minute.
I know, where's the applause? Come on now, come on, thank you, thank you.
Something to do with marijuana, we did.
Thank you.
It's even better.
Okay, let's see what else we can get done quickly.
Number three now? I'm just, I'm not sure where we're at.
I'm on my list.
Number two?
Number two. Yes. Number two. No, no, the sewer backup claim.
Yeah.
Is it number three, then? Okay.
We did one, seven, eight, and nine.
So, the only reason why, no, because the only reason why I wanted to bring this up is I wanted everybody to understand that these people have already spent considerable amount of money. We're talking over $17,000 already.
Yep.
And casualty claims are totally different than auto claims, than health claims, where you have turnaround times and limitations of when things are gonna get done. These claims could go on for quite a while.
They could claim with their own home insurance, too. They just don't want to.
Well, if you claim with your own home insurance, now, the problem being is, is that besides these two claims, there is a potential third claim that I was told that already happened.
Oh, yeah, what?
Was there a third claim that happened, Mr. Dockett?
No, I, I heard that there was, but no, I can't confirm that.
Okay.
Not the resident.
No, the same one.
I actually talked to Mr. Willis and asked him that, because I thought some of the comments were a little confusing. He said, no.
Okay.
Just before the meeting? I mean, that's what I heard him say, because the way it's written in the report, it seems like it indicates there was three.
Yeah.
So I asked him, I asked him, and I said, does that mean there was a third claim? And he said, no.
Okay.
So that's, that's what he told me.
That's the way, that's the way I read it, too.
And I read it that way, but I specifically asked him, and he said, no, so.
Okay, so we have officially received the update on the sewer backup claim. Can we move on to number?
Do we need to table it?
No, what I would like to do is, I would, I would like to have some type of report from our insurance company at our next meeting, and if it's not resolved, then the, I would like the township to consider paying out of pocket to cover the expenses, and have the insurance company reimburse the township.
Mr. Ains.
I was told by the homeowner that the evaluator came out Friday, last Friday, and she seemed to be satisfied with that, that he was saying that within a week, he would probably be expecting us to get something back from the insurance company. So I think that would be timely for your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, hopefully. Okay.
So a comment was made at probably one of the other board meetings as to the priorities of a township is not to be fiscally responsible, and in order for us to pay claims like this, we do need to be fiscally responsible. And so that's why we are here, it's our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the township runs its business, and this is why.
Okay. All right, number two. I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 19613, amending the 2020 budget.
All support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Chick. Do we have any discussion on this amendment? No? Okay. Since it's a budget thing, I imagine we better do a-
It's a resolution.
Budget resolution, yeah, we should do a roll call. Okay. Manley? Yes. Otto?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Zelina?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Bellinger? Yes.
Okay, thank you, that passes.
Everybody was sleeping.
7-0, all right.
On a roll.
The next one is to consider the purchase offer for 75 Barker. I'd like to make a motion to postpone that to our next meeting. Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Otto. Any discussion on this one?
Have a discussion.
Yep, go ahead. Go ahead.
I would like, I'd like an update from the township manager, because I think he has some fabulous news.
If I could, this morning at 11:30, I received an email from the real estate agent that we had a second offer submitted in writing, and the second, first offer was for 275, which is what the listing amount was. This offer was for 350, and I understand that there's some counter offering that might be coming, too. So I would recommend you postpone this, so we see where that goes back and forth, and what number it gets to. But it's definitely a demonstration of what the impact of the legislation you just adopted would have.
Right.
And, and ultimately, if this goes through, it should impact your tax revenue for property tax, because it'll be based on the new standard.
So we're going to make a motion, there's a motion to table it?
Motion to postpone to the next meeting.
Okay.
Support? Motion by Chockley, somebody else? Otto supports me. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Who's supporting it?
I did.
Yeah, so you can vote yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
All the prices going up.
All right.
That's right, well.
Okay.
Supply and demand, the man's going to be high.
The next?
No, pun intended.
Just, just an FYI, too. Your taxes aren't based on your sales price, it's based on what the building's worth.
Correct.
So those things that are going around, not true.
Right. That's true. It's based on your SEV.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, wait, to approve the rezoning from agricultural to limited industrial for 6410 Whitmore Lake Road, to operate a landscaping business with outdoor storage of materials. This involves parcels 0228, I mean, 292003, and 02292004.
All support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Chick. Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, I have discussions, so.
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, the memo unfortunately we got was dated before we approved the master plan, which we now have approved, approved the master plan.
Yeah.
So I guess why wasn't the memo updated to include that it's now approved? Because I think it should be. I mean, so basically, this rezoning is in accordance to the adapted master plan.
Yes.
So I guess I would have expected a memo coming from our township planner that would have said just that, as opposed to us knowing that we approved the master plan. Again, you know, if people don't come to all the meetings, aren't reading all the meetings, but people are probably coming now that marijuana's been on the topic, it's, it just should be updated.
If I may, the only reason that the letter you received was dated as such is because that was a letter addressed to the planning commission, and the planning commission considered those items at the time that was in effect for that. So if you'd like, at any point in time, any kind of update for the township board, that can be provided.
Right.
We just usually provide you with what the planning commission saw, and how they made their recommendation to you either for or against.
That's good. I still think a note, so you sent that, you know, this is a note sent to the planning mission, you know, you know that the ordinance has, or the master plan has been adopted, you know, the recommendation is this.
So, so providing you with a summary memo as a cover letter, so to include everything that would be approved, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Been asking for a long time.
Okay, that can be done.
Yes, okay. So the planning commission, we're all set, it's part of the new master plan. It's, I mean, I know that, I'm just confirming that news, Chick.
Yeah, actually, the, this business, Terra Firma, we welcome them into the township. Their business will have much less of an impact of what was already there, and it'll be much more aesthetically pleasing for that area, and it's a perfect fit. Even, we had public come to the meeting, and they were very happy with it, so.
Yeah, that's good. Mr. Dockett?
Oh, I don't see why we went through all this. It was a nursery to start with. I mean, it's been a nursery for 20 years or something, so what, what's the big, and they're going to open a nursery? So, they're just a new person. That is what kills me about, about the planning commission and all the rules and regulations. Here's a business that's been a nursery for 20 years, and they sell it to somebody else, and they put them through the third degree.
Actually, they requested it. Terra Firma requested the rezoning, so, yeah.
You know, they-
They did.
Well, they, they requested to be zoned, they were ag.
Right.
And they were existing.
They were on the light industrial.
They wanted light industrial.
Next door is, is another one that's ag.
The use was more compatible with the areas, yep.
Maybe it is for them, but there's going to be people in there that's not going to want the zoning when they find out all the hoops they're going to have to jump through for the, for the planning commission. They're going to say, I'm going to leave my property as is, and, and you guys can, you know, sue me if you like, thank you.
And we will.
Well, we need to treat people a lot differently than we do.
Mr. Ains.
Just a matter of note, the owner called me earlier today, he was not feeling well, and I told him I didn't think it was essential to be here, but he wanted you to know that he was very interested and would have been here otherwise.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. 7-0, all right. Do you want to do this one, Ms. Chick, since it's planning commission? Or, I can do it.
Yeah, I, okay. I make a motion to approve Terra Firma's request for conditional use to operate a landscape business with outdoor storage of materials.
All support.
Okay, we have a motion.
Those are the same address.
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Chick, support by Ms. Otto. Did you want to include what the six conditions recommended by the planning commission?
We can, yeah, or, yeah, whatever information that the planning commission sent to the board, approved with that information from the planning commission.
Okay. All right, motion by Chick, support by Otto.
So we're updating it to include-
Yeah.
-the items indicated by the planning commission.
As conditional use, as conditions for approval.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, thank you. That passed, 7-0.
I move to accept the trustee liaison reports as provided.
Okay. Motion by Belliger, support by Manley. Okay. Any discussion on these items?
Yes, I would like to, I don't know if I have to do it separately, but I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation, unfortunately, accept the resignation of three land preservation committee members, Mr. Patrick Kelly, Mr. Jacob Donner, and Mr. David Perry.
Jacob Donner?
Yes, Mr. Jacob Donner.
With regret.
With regret, yes.
Yeah.
David Perry.
All support.
Okay.
All support.
Motion by Zelna, support by Otto. Any more discussion on that?
Just like to send out, if we can have Jennifer let people know that we have three available spots.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passed, 7-0. All right, I will just make a note that I did not include a supervisor report in this packet, but I will write something up from all of the meetings for the next, for the November 26th packet. Okay, so we have a motion by Belliger and support by Manley to accept the trustee liaison reports. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes. Now, as announcements, I guess I'd like to start and say, we do have several board openings coming up that get appointed in December, plus there's, well, there's three DDA appointments. No, no, yes, there's three DDA appointments, two planning commissioners who may or may not want to return to the board, and do we have any other ones? Land preservation, we have openings.
We still have Parks and Rec had a couple openings.
They had a couple.
We have some applicants, but of course, we're welcoming applicants as well.
Okay.
Parks and Rec.
So if anybody wants to apply to be on one of the boards, we have an application form, and just give us a shout, and we'll see what we can do. Okay. Any, oh, and I would like to thank everybody who worked on the trunk or treat, apparently it was fabulous.
It was fabulous.
What's, 400 kids, I heard?
Yeah.
Like, wow, the kids really get, get excited about these things. But thank you, I have to thank Jenny Only and Dana Forster, who worked very hard on that, and Barb Watkins, and Jack Seacrest. You know, the DDA spends a lot of volunteer time working on these things, and so I have to give them kudos for all of that, but.
The weather turned out good, just in time.
Yeah, yeah, it was scary, yeah. All right, any other announcements from anyone?
Well, as you, it was in the board package. I just wanted to let people know that the Northfield Township Historical Society received the grant that they applied for, so, just for the public in case they didn't read the entire package. So congratulations to the historical society.
Great. Okay, oh, Ms. Otto, go ahead.
Yep, so I have two announcements. The Kiwanis Christmas tree sales is on. We are going to have delivery on the, I think, the Friday before Thanksgiving, after Thanksgiving, and start selling them on Saturday, the 29th. We did, there is a shortage of trees this year. We were only able to secure about 50 trees, that's all. It's a long story of how we did it, but at one point, we did not think that we were going to even sell Christmas trees this year. So, and that will be at 75 Barker, on the outside.
Okay.
We think. I did get a notice on Adopt a Family program is in dire need of people who can adopt family children for Christmas holiday. This year, Northfield Human Services has more families than need our help, but family, but people who signed up to help, even if you cannot adopt a family, consider donating a gift card for the holiday. It's all about the children and family support.
Thank you.
And that was Sandy Gass asked me to announce that.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. Second call to the public. If anyone would like to come up and speak to us again, there's an opportunity. Please turn on the microphone, state your name, your address, and we'd like to hear from you. Three minutes.
My name's Craig Warburton. It's spelled W-A-R-B-U-R-T-O-N. Should you wish to admonish me in the packet again, please spell my name correctly.
Okay. T-O-N? Okay. Thank you.
Dan McLean, 9650 Main Street. First of all, thank you all. That was a pretty rough year, I'm sure, for all of you involved. I know it was pretty tense, but, you know, some of it could also have been less tense, in my opinion, with a little better handling of the meetings themselves, where we always seem to be confused about what ordinance version, what page, what this, what that. It seems to me, in business as I've always been, we had projected on a screen, you had the version control and document control, so you knew exactly what was happening with each, each document that you were looking at, and even maybe editing on the fly with a Word document. They have actual Word document scenarios that have editing, editing features right in, and it'll show you all the things that were changed from the previous version with the initials next to it of who made the changes. Very simple to do, everybody being on the same page every time, and it would make these meetings go about three times as fast. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Adam Olley, Whitmore Lake resident. I was looking for some clarity on your DDA openings, because on the website, it has, it's not updated.
You're right.
It has two positions that expired in June of 2019, one of them being my wife. Jennifer Carlisle emailed my wife, or you emailed my wife, and said all she needed to do was reply, saying she wanted to remain on the DDA, and she did, back in June. And then she got another email last week from Jennifer, saying that her spot was expiring. And she let Jennifer know that she replied to her email back in June, and that she would like to remain on, and that's from Marlene, all she had to do was inform her. So I don't know what the other spots that are expiring are, but you should probably update your website so people know what's going on. I'd like to thank the board for listening to the, well, all but one of the board, for listening to the voters. So I don't know if you're trying to save your yes votes for next November, or what your tactic is, but when the, you are part of the initiative to get something on the election, and then you can go against the voice of the people, I don't know how you think that's a good look unless you're just trying to hold on to those yes votes and think that's how you're going to get back on the board, but good luck with that. So, other than that, same, these boards are pretty ridiculous, these meetings. I'm trying to follow the packet that you guys put out last Thursday, and then it's move this item, move that item. Like he said, like, something's got to be better. Maybe it starts with how the agenda's formed or whatever, but it's, it's pretty hard to follow, and some of us are actually trying to follow, because as we heard tonight, sometimes things get removed, and we don't know why, or things get added, and we don't know why. And so when you're doing it on the fly, it's pretty much impossible to follow. So, I mean, we got Mr. Gordon back here, setting up office, just so he can follow what you guys are doing. Like, not everyone else has a table available to them, so have a good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you for adopting the ordinance on pot. I think it's, it's what the people here said they wanted. And if your ordinance is, is well done, then it will protect and address the concerns of the people that voted against pot, which I hope that you will do, because everybody in this community needs to have their opinions and their concerns addressed and respected. Three, three fast things. I'd really like to see this, this board take some initiative in terms of your energy use, your carbon footprint, and I don't know if you've done an energy audit of all the of all the buildings that we have, but I think that'd be a good starting place, especially this one here. I'm sure it uses tons of energy, the HVAC system is messed up, always has been. Um, so an energy audit of our buildings would be a good idea. I'd like you to consider before you spend millions and millions of dollars to expand the sewer system, to consider solar panels, um, and a lot of other, uh, twenty-first century ideas, so that we can become, uh, uh, less analog and more digital. Uh, secondly, relating to that, um, I actually update all my apps when I get in here, because the high internet here is so much faster than it is my house. Uh, your download speed here can be approaching fifty megs, and mine at home is five. So if you can get that kinda speed here, perhaps we can extend that all the way down Main Street. I know the library has a faster internet speed than a lot of other people do. Um, high-speed internet on Main Street would attract a lot of small businesses. Um, a lot of companies are not gonna move someplace where they can't get, can't use the internet. Um, and lastly, to address the same issue that, uh, Mr. Olney brought up, your packet is two hundred pages, three hundred pages, sometimes approaching four hundred pages long, and your agenda is two pages long. Um, you have the items numbered here. I don't know why you couldn't have the corresponding page number in the packet relating to what you have on your agenda, so when I'm trying to figure out where number seven is, and I'm thumbing through two hundred pages of documents, I know what, where I'm gonna be going to. Um, I've mentioned this before, it's not happened. I think it would be very helpful to the public and to members of the board for this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one. Okay. All right, uh, board member comments?
I might want one.
Mr. Dockett, you have a comment?
I want to speak to the man who, this is what I got on Thursday, and probably over three hundred pages, no numbers, no numbers anywhere. Uh, you're absolutely right, there's no way. You think you're confused. I'm up here and I gotta vote on this stuff, and that's what, that's what we get. And I get about thirteen bucks an hour, fourteen bucks an hour, maybe. Uh, we're the worst...
How do you get that much?
We're paid, we're paid less.
What are you doing?
We're, we're, we're paid less than anybody in the office, but, and this is what we got, and so I'm as confused as the people out there. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Bellinger?
Thank you for the public participation tonight. Um, I do wanna say that the, uh, passing of the marijuana ordinances is gonna be very significant, very likely very significant to our community, very transformational. Um, you know, I guess we'll see where it goes, but it's, four names will be forever affixed to this very, very serious transformation of our community. Chick, Otto, Zelnok, and Dockett. Thank you, I wish you all a wonderful night.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Chick? Oh.
Um, Adam Shabon, if anybody would like to help contribute, it cost him over two hundred dollars to paint that underpass at Barker Road and US twenty-three. Um, uh, there is a link I will provide to the board members, and I'll put it on Facebook as well, so he should not have to pay that cost. He was awesome to have to do that. And he does a lot for this community, too, if you don't know him. He does a lot for this community at, with very little recognition.
Thank you. Ms. Otto?
I already commented on the Kiwanis and...
Oh, yes, that was your announcement, okay.
Yep.
Ms. Manley?
To follow up with Janet, just a thought, could that be maybe a Parks and Rec thing? You know, could they maybe donate money in their budget, you know, towards the painting of the bridge? Just a thought.
Yeah.
Maybe bring it up at your meeting, if you have any time. I thought it might fit into that category.
Okay.
Besides the public.
I can bring it up?
And again, just thank you for everybody for their comments. The comments about the meetings and the packets, I mean, worries me, this has been go, an ongoing thing, and throwing the marijuana into this, I mean, it was always my fear that, I don't know if we can handle this, and I still have that fear, but we'll have to deal with it as it comes. So, thank you.
Ms. Zelnok?
So, first of all, um, thank the voters, and thank the people for coming out, and again, I think as a representative of the people, I need to represent the majority of the people. I do think the ordinance does take in consideration some of the concerns that the people in the rural area have. I look forward to bringing in the new businesses in town. I also, and just applaud that, three years into this administration, and we still can't get agendas right. We have highly paid professionals. We have a member, Mr. McLean, in the audience telling us how to do version control. We pay over ninety thousand dollars to our planners. We pay over a hundred and twenty thousand dollar in compensation to our township manager, and we're having these discussions. So, actually, Ms. Chick, Ms. Otto, Mr. Dockett, Mr. Bellinger, or Ms. Bellinger, pardon me, I think, I wanna hold you accountable to make our township manager accountable. You hired him, you rehired him. I just, it's appalling. For our planner, we pay him good money. As Mr. Dockett said, we probably need, we need to do an RFP for new planners.
Absolutely.
Uh, it's just appalling. Uh, and, again, the only reason I moved the agenda item tonight is because the public was here, but the fact that we have to do it at the meeting, and it wasn't considered that, that many people, and we knew, it was one of the biggest, it's an election, it doesn't get any bigger than an election, in that it was at the end of the agenda, not logical, not acceptable. It's time to fire people, 'cause in twenty-twenty, we're gonna get fired.
Real quickly, can I just make a suggestion that when we get our draft agenda, and we think whatever's on is okay, that we can suggest where the...
Oh, sure.
...the location of the item should be in the agenda, so we don't do this at the last minute.
I, I actually have made that suggestion several times, and I've been told that the order is not the order it may end up in.
No, it's not, but if we say this, but let's move this to this, okay.
You can.
Yeah. Um, okay, Mr. Ains.
I think if anybody in the public has dealt with me on the marijuana issue, they know that I've been neutral, professional. The parties contacting me about setting up businesses seem to be very pleased with the interaction, and I don't think anybody in the public has any idea what my position personally would be on it, and that's probably the way it should stay. But, uh, this was not intended to be a disrespect to the public. It was intended to try to expedite the, uh, agenda. I thought you could get done with those several items in fifteen or twenty minutes, and then be right into the marijuana discussion. So, uh, you know, I, I keep trying each time, and we do different ways of doing it. Um, we'll talk about it further with you.
And, um, okay, my last one is, I have spoken with Jennifer about numbering the pages and being able to, to, um, link to the next item online and everything, and, um, I think it's a training issue, or it could be a software issue. So, I think it's something that we could do. Um, things are very tense on Thursday, so as we're putting the packet together, and especially these bigger ones where there's, I don't know, fifty different items, pages that we're trying to get together, and, um, it's, it's really challenging. So we're trying to get things in earlier. Um, I wasn't around for this one, I had meetings on Wednesday, and then I was gone Thursday and Friday, so, um, I, I had asked for the agenda to be texted to me or something, but I didn't get it either, so, um, I didn't have any opportunity to make any changes, not like I would've, but, um, anyway, uh, so we're trying, and feel free to, to give, uh, comments, and, you know, it, uh, it's, it's, it's tough, it's a lot of work. Um, Ms. Bellinger?
I just wanna say thank you to our professional staff and our office staff for the work that they do, and their attempts to juggle this challenging township board.
Yeah.
I thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming out.
So I have one other comment, Ms. Chockley, on the agenda. Is it not a policy of the board that the material is to be received at three-thirty on Tuesday? Does that occur?
No.
Then why isn't the policy of the board being followed?
My question on that is, at first, it's three o'clock, not three-thirty.
Thank you, so I gave you half an hour, right? Three, five o'clock would be fine.
Also, like, this packet, the planning commission met on Wednesday night, and then we were putting it into the packet, so if we don't make exceptions on occasion like that, then the planning commission items dealing with this new business would've been postponed for two weeks. So we try to slip anything in we can, if we feel like it's something that's urgent and can't wait till the next board meeting. And so, we are trying to do what you said. You said the packet needs to be out at four-thirty sharp, and it got done at four-twenty-five, and you got what you got. Um, as far as numbering, I'll talk to Jennifer and see what we can do to expedite it. Part of the concern that she and I have is that it seems like if an issue does get tabled, then the board expects us to give us, give you a second time, all the information that was in the prior discussion. So nobody is not completely informed. So if you wanna cut down on the packet, we can talk about that issue as well, but, uh, it's late and I don't think I'm taking...
I mean, we just need to follow our procedure. An exception? Tell me the exception. On the packet, I wanna say that I got the planning commission at, and we would probably accept that, but if it's a common occurrence, which I think it is, then it's not good enough.
All right, well, thank you all.
I move to adjourn.
Yep, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you.